We will be led by City Clerk Paul Jimenez with the invocation and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, please.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for giving us this day, a beautiful day where we're all healthy and hopefully all our families are healthy and friends. Please keep us with a sound mind to have a positive meaning and to live long and healthy lives. Thank you.
Can we all stand, place a flag? Repeat after me, the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we have one minute of silence for all the people have perished on the COVID-19 because we have passed 500,000 people in the United States and also Hawthorne have lost a lot of people?
Absolutely.
And also keeping our prayer, our brother Tiger Woods for that accident he got this morning. So one minute of prayer, please. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Montero.
You are.
Councilmember Valentine has a presentation on the agenda related to the Hawthorne Business Expo.
Thank you, Mayor. So on January 27th, we held our fifth annual Hawthorne Business Expo, which was a virtual town hall. And I think Eric Chavez has a video before we begin the presentations.
Please do.
Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine hosted the 2021 Hawthorne Business Expo virtually. Ernesto Giles has more.
The virtual town hall brought local businesses together for a program that focused on businesses' survival and growth.
COVID-19 has challenged the business community as never before. But it has also created new avenues for you to learn new online skills, to better market your products in order to continue to service your existing customers and to reach new ones.
The four-hour expo had several presentations and a panel discussion with several local business owners sharing their strategies during the pandemic and discuss how the businesses reinvented themselves.
And what we did to adapt is we put our full attention to develop three programs as soon as possible. And we got them up and running by early summer.
We took a few steps to try and change the narrative and get back to producing revenue versus watching revenue fly away from us.
Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine is grateful to everyone who participated and shared their knowledge with the community and plans to bring back the expo again next year. For HCTV, I'm Ernesto Giles.
To learn more about the Hawthorne Business Expo, visit their website at HawthorneBusinessExpo.com.
Thank you. There were a lot of, there are a lot of people to thank for this event. So I want to not waste time and go ahead and begin the certificates of appreciation. First, we had a keynote speaker, Tim Berry. We had two panel discussions. One which provided information concerning resources for businesses impacted by COVID-19. The second consisted of the businesses themselves describing how they had to reinvent themselves in order to survive the pandemic. So tonight I want to recognize with certificates of appreciation the participants who made all of this happen. First, I want to have special thanks to Jan Vogel, Executive Director of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, for providing the event not only with financial resources, but also three of his very talented staff, Chris Cagle, Deborah Shepherd, and Donald Perry. I know that Jan is not here. Would his representative, Chris Cagle, care to say a word?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Valentine. Absolutely. May I turn my video to you? There you go. Yeah, Jan sends his regrets, but as you know, we've been involved in the expo since its inception and we're really grateful to the city and to you especially for taking the leadership role and putting that on. And we've been very impressed each time with the amount of information available at these expos for the community. And this was a special one this time because we did it on Zoom and it actually allowed our team to provide even more information, I thought. So it was, it was very, very well received, I think. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your participation and thank Jan for his support. Also, we have certificates for Tim Berry, who gave a seminar on lean business planning. I know that Tim is not here, but we're very grateful to him for that great seminar that he gave. And I want to recognize the panelists from Panel One. Deborah Shepherd, the leader of Panel One. Panel One, Eric Lee, our own city manager. Barbara Levine, Damon Skinner, and Chris Cagle. Are any of them here and would any of them like to say a word?
Hi, Olivia. It's Barbara.
Hello, Barbara.
Hi. As a Hawthorne resident and a proud member of our community and also the Business Assistance Team at the L.A. County Economic Development. It was a pleasure and an honor to be a part of it. A big shout out to Deborah, who did an amazing job moderating the panel and keeping us on cue. And for you, Olivia, thank you and city management for always putting on an amazing event.
Thank you, Barbara.
And I would like to say that this panel was the easiest to work with ever. They were great coordinating, great ideas, and I was very happy to be part of it.
And thank you so much for doing, for leading that panel. And it was a really great discussion with a lot of great information for our, for our businesses on how they, on the resources that are available to them. Thank you so much for leading that panel. Our second panel was actually a panel where we actually had the businesses talk about what their own experiences were as far as how they had to reinvent themselves in order to survive COVID-19. Larry Johnson was the leader, Michael Rito, the owner of the lab, Chris Dougherty, the manager of Marriott Town Place Suites, Brad Storms, Vice President of CNS Sales, Joel Verch, the owner of the Farmer's Agent, and Adam Stoffani, the owner of, I'm sorry, the owner of Le Pan du Jour, and Shalon Berkman, the owner of Earth Cafe. Are any of them here and would they like to say a word?
Hey, Olivia, this is Joel. As a, as a business owner in Hawthorne, I was excited to be part of it and you guys put on a great show. It was really, you know, easy to be a participant and I hope everything helped out and I'm looking forward to helping out in the future.
And we're so grateful because you help out every year. So thank you so much.
Good to help. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to say a word? We tried something new and we had entertainers this time. We hadn't done entertainment before. But because we did it all virtually, we thought, okay, let's try something different and have some entertainment. So we had some entertainers and I wish to thank Lorinda Hawkins-Smith for her comedy routine and Don Perry for his inspiring rendition of the song "Climb Every Mountain." And we really needed that inspiration. Are either of them here and would they like to say a word?
Yes. Hi, Olivia. It's Lorinda. I just want to thank you for taking the leap of faith of having entertainment and specifically comedy and also the leap of faith of going forward with the expo online. From where I sat and I did watch it all, it was a success. And here, here, I feel honored to be, to be able to be a part of it.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for participating, for your comedy routine. We needed a laugh because this has been a very depressing year. We needed a little levity. Thank you for doing that and we wish you well. And then last but not least, our wonderful committee, which I couldn't do this without them. Every year, they surprise me and with all of the hundreds of countless hours that they put in, in order to make this happen. So I want to give special thanks to my committee and I'd like to, to read their names. Everyone whose names I'm reading tonight and who's speaking, they're all going to get certificates of appreciation. If you were here in person, we'd be giving them out, but since you're not, we're going to have to mail them to you. So these are the members of my committee. Starlene Van Durin, Educational Director of El Camino College Small Business Development Center. Michelle La Grande, El Camino College Small Business Development Center. Joe Simone, owner of Menace Studios. Von Norris, Director of Recreation and Community Service, City of Hawthorne. Kewanna Bowie, Supervisor, Recreation and Community Service, City of Hawthorne. Eric Chavez, Production Supervisor, Hawthorne Community Television. Damon Skinner, Assistant Vice President, Merrill Lynch, Pierce, Finner and Smith. Chris Dougherty, Campus General Manager, Courtyard Town Place Suites, LAX Hawthorne and the Dichi Wood Fired Pizza and Kitchen in Hawthorne. Tom Quintana, Marketing Outreach Coordinator, South Bay Workforce Investment Board. Omari Valentine, Owner of Off the Lip at Web Design and Digital Marketing. Thank you all for your participation, for your constant support. This kind of an effort does not, is not done in a week. It's not done in two, in two weeks. It's done, it takes months to get this done. And this year was especially challenging because we didn't, we decided not to do it in person because we couldn't do it in person. So we decided we wanted to have something so the businesses would have a way of getting the information, getting the resource, getting the information on resources that were available to them, learning about the challenges the businesses were having. But we had to do it digitally. And that was a challenge putting it on. And I especially want to thank my technical advisors, Joe Simone, owner of Menace Studios, Eric Chavez, Production Supervisor for Hawthorne Community Television, and Omari Valentine, Owner of Off the Lip Web Design Company. All of you, the, all of you, the panel, the participants and the committee members. We owe you, the city owes you a debt of gratitude for your participation and helpfulness in, in, in the support of our, of our business community. Would any of my committee members like to say a word?
Yeah, I'll, this is Omari. I'd like to say that I was really thankful to be brought in on the project. That was really, it was really awesome that, that we were able to pivot in a time when all, you know, many other business types are pivoting. And, you know, really just, just kind of reinvent ourselves. And I think it really worked out really well and I'm hopeful that we can continue the positive momentum in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all. And that ends my presentation.
Okay. All right. So thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Protem Valentine. Thank you for continuing this longstanding tradition, we can say now, with regards to the economic development within the city of Hawthorne. It seems like this is one of our priorities for the city and you're leading that effort. So thank you so much. And you have the support of myself and the rest of your colleagues here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. City Clerk, do we have anybody from, do we have Kathleen Fearborn here online or not?
Oh, Kathleen, are you there? I don't see her, but in case she's using another.
Is she there? No?
No.
So when, we'll, let's just mention that we have another centenarian. Last week, we had Francis Abamonte, who turned 100 years old. And now we have Kathleen Fearborn, who is another one of our Hawthorne residents that turned 100. And she had a nice little celebration over the weekend, which was shown on TV, I think KNBC and I think KABC and a couple of the other stations on TV did a little, a little video interview of her and then they kind of did a little report. And so we, as the city of Hawthorne, yesterday we went and delivered some flowers, some balloons to her with our police officers in the lead. And we presented her with a proclamation on behalf of the city. So we would like to congratulate Kathleen Fearborn for making it to 100. And I hope, let's give her a round of applause. And sometimes it's, it's kind of interesting to find out what their secrets are. I like to know what her secret is. I know there's this one lady who turned, she turned, she, she went up to 106 years old. And she said her secret was a cup of tequila, like a little glass of tequila every morning. Or like in the afternoon, I don't know at what point, in the morning, afternoon, but she really did. I'm not even kidding. That's what she said. It was small probably, but you know, it might have lifted her spirits up or something. I don't know. Okay, so congratulations, Ms. Fearborn. Okay, we do have oral communications, but I wanted to bring up the appointments of the commissions up. Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, okay. I'm going to bring up the commissions, but in order to satisfy protocol, Mr. City Attorney, are you there?
Yes. Can you please ask if anybody would like to speak on the appointment of those commissioners?
Do we, Mr. City Clerk, do we have any, any calls or any letters?
We didn't receive any emails and from the phone calls, we received, no one brought up that topic, but not everyone told us what their topic was.
Okay, so I would like to move forward and make the motion for both Mr. William Cortez and Mr. Kenny Arroyo to the Youth Commission and to the Civil Service Commission respectively.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Can you please take them one at a time, please?
Okay, absolutely. So, so we have the nomination for, I'd like to make the motion for Mr. William Cortez to the Youth Commission.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, before we make the motion, can, can we hear from each candidate first?
Absolutely.
All right.
That's what they're here for. Mr. William Cortez, can you let us know a little bit about yourself and what your plans are for the Youth Commission?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is William Cortez. I've been a resident of Hawthorne nearly my whole life. I've lived on Ramona, across the street from RFK Hospital. I've gone to Acacia Baptist School on El Segundo, around the corner of Hawthorne High School. And I've been, I've been living here my whole life and I've been working closely with, not this community, but I have been proactive with other communities. And I'd like to bring that investment towards this community. And starting with the foundation of our youth, that'd be the best place to put my investment towards this city.
Any questions from our city council?
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. William Cortez. Thank you for the interest on the Youth Commission. Can you be a little bit more specific on the other volunteer that you made on the other communities? Give us some example of your involvement.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Well, I've been on the Board of Directors for the Los Angeles Gateway Chamber of Commerce. It's a chamber of commerce in Harbor City. Additionally, I am a co-chair for the Council of International Trade. Since my primary focus of work is international trade, I have been able to give free counsel on the types of, types of practices and information that an exporter would need to know before they even think about getting cargo ready to ship somewhere. And additionally, I have been working non-work related with just, just the Harbor City in general. Just recently, we've lost the jewel of Harbor City, Joanne Bailey. And now we're scrambling to keep the chamber together and it's, you know, got a lot of people working there.
Can you give us maybe one or two goals that you have in mind for the Youth Commission in the future?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I have a two-year-old son, so I do have him in mind for everything that I would want to do for this Youth Commission, which would be being more proactive, getting the, just the youth more connected, finding alternatives beyond the school to have kids connected together educational-wise, have them build the experience to know how to become independent for the future and build a strong development in their careers.
Thank you. I second the motion if there is no more question.
Okay. Okay, yes. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Paul, City Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Alex, and thank you, council members.
So absolutely. So we're looking forward to hearing from you, not just, not just today, but as soon as you become involved and you have reports from the Youth Commission, it's important that you guys reach out to us and let us know how you guys need help, of more proactiveness. Okay?
Understood.
But please stay online and the city clerk's going to contact you on the official swearing-in, where you're going to get sworn in and it becomes fully official. And then he'll tell you, he'll tell you who your fellow commissioners are. So just stay online.
Yeah, Mr. Cortez, actually, we'll give you a call, so you don't need to stay online. We'll follow up with a phone call.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Okay, I'd like to make, go ahead with the, making the motion for Mr. Kenny Arroyo to Civil Service Commission. Mr., are you with us? Mr. Arroyo?
Hi, good evening all.
So I made the motion. I don't know if, okay. All right, so roll call vote. Do you have a question?
Before we vote.
No, I know. I was waiting for you to say something. Go ahead.
Mr. Kenny Arroyo, thank you for, you know, for your application and your interest to serve on Civil Service Commission. But Kenny, will you tell us more about yourself and what you've been doing, you know, in your professional work, et cetera, et cetera?
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Montero. Great to meet you. I also want to say I've seen all of you all over the city. I've seen your, your signs and posters. So I'm glad all of you got elected. I voted for all of you here.
Thank you.
I want to say that I'm very proud of the city. The city, in my opinion, is doing amazing. I don't see any graffiti or vandalism. Our police seem very supportive from the community and vice versa. So I do want to congratulate you guys on such a great work. Because, you know, our surrounding cities are not there and I think that, you know, I'm very proud to say that, you know, we're doing great. With that being said, I'm 35 years old. I've been a volunteer for L.A. County Sheriff's and the city of Norwalk. Mainly what I did is a lot of DUI checkpoints, assistance, translation. I speak Spanish fluently. I speak some Italian, a little bit of Korean. And I use those skills a lot with DUI checkpoints. So, you know, I can say that I assisted, you know, many times to save lives because, you know, not allowing people to drive under the influence is important. You know, that's, that's very reckless and dangerous. So I would say that for me, one of my principles as a person is accountability. And I think it's very important that we maintain that integrity there. And I think it's very important that we maintain that integrity there, uh which would led me to want to be part of the Civil Service Commission. Uh because I want to be involved and I was looking for a way to be involved and I would say that res- resonates more with what my belief system is maintaining accountability. Which is, you know, America is we the people, right? So it's about the people voting, it's about the people coming together. Um and so for me, it's very important to be able to be part of s- a system, it it gives me meaning, you know, it gives me purpose.
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. First of all, um I noticed in your application that you have uh several emphasis where you have police as aspirations. I'm just curious, are you looking to be a police officer? Are you looking to, what what's your goals?
Possibly, um I had some uh knee issues that I've been dealing with for a long time. And that's been an impediment, so I'm considering at this point uh furthering my education, which is that's my goal for twenty twenty-one. Given that twenty twenty was so so difficult on, you know, all aspects. Um I decided twenty twenty-one, I definitely want to uh continue my education. Um I attended all communal college years ago, I did their Police Academy Training Three, Level Three. Um but I do want, definitely want to focus more on the uh criminal justice degree, just because again, it resonates with justice and, you know, truth and integrity and um that's pretty much my goals.
How do you volunteer with um LA County Sheriff's? What's, it says two thousand and five to present, how do you uh interact with them? How are you selected? How are you current?
Yes, the way it works with LA County Sheriff's, they have a civilian program where anybody can apply. Um unless, you know, you had been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor would prevent you from participating, but um it's open to the public. Um you fill out an application, you go through a background check and um you get assigned to the whatever uh wherever they need people. Um there's different, uh you can call it like stations, you have uh Transportation Bureau, that's where I've been most of the time. Uh in the city of Norwalk and I also, I volunteered for the city of Norwalk Public Safety back in two thousand and four. But yeah, so I put two thousand and five to present because I've been doing it on and off.
It's not, it's not consistent.
No.
Okay, well, I'm glad I asked that question.
Yes.
Um, um, do you, are you familiar with the Civil Service Commission and what it does ultimately, its objectives and goals?
Yeah, I I I understand that you could say an authority, it's a board that oversees human resources. Makes decisions in in certain situations between, you know, employees of the city.
Would you feel or would you think that you would have some type of bias considering your police uh interaction? Should there ever be a police grievance?
Not at all, not at all, no, no, I am completely against that. Um I'm about doing the right thing. Uh you know, i- i- if you wear a uniform or not, if you commit a crime, you do the time. That's my belief system, you, there's no uh get out of free jail uh card. You ha- you know, that's my belief, I'm completely against that. I don't stand for that, that is disgusting. I believe in doing the right thing.
Yeah, uh I guess the reason I could explain uh the reason for that uh question is throughout the histories here in the city of Hawthorne, we've had some bad actors uh on the commission. And there's been some activity that's taken place that we would call unethical. And so those are things that we're looking at this time around and being very thorough with regards to language being implemented to assure that that never happens again. And uh there's some uh some amendments that were made through Councilmember Montero and uh myself, and so these are things that we take um very seriously and want to make sure that the people that we have in place are, you know, not only transparent but are truthful. And uh give uh, you know, true uh due allegiance when it comes to uh reviewing facts and providing information that is not biased or is in any way, um you know, being um intimidated by those outsiders trying to make a a a difference on the board, so these are the types of things that um I'm uh looking for and I'm sure other leaders on this council as well.
Yes, no, I I I can definitely say to you that you can rest at night believing that I will do the right thing. I'm very passionate about it. Um I grew up in a Christian home, I I go to church every Sunday, you know, that's been my 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 lifestyle. You know, and I definitely will always do the right thing. Um I understand police corruption happens, I am completely against that. That is against, you know, our principles and values and our moral. Uh and no, if, again, uh if you're whether a person who commits a crime or a police officer who commits a crime, crime's a crime. And it needs to be dealt with accordingly, so that badge doesn't, doesn't allow you to get away from that. You're not above the law and I truly believe that.
Uh to the Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um thank you, Ms. English, to bring those things up. Because you know how the Civil Service Commission oh is almost like a a commission that vigilant, you know, the the police department, because we don't have a police commission in the city of Hawthorne, right, like Los Angeles has or some other cities? That they accountable for those uh uh civil service commission that is appointed to review the police con- conduct and behavior, et cetera, et cetera. So so our s- Civil Service Commission is very important for the person not to be biased, like Ms. English mentioned, and also like a comfort of interest, because you, you have worked not completely, you know, have a full-time employer, but you have volunteered for the the sheriff. And you said when you you uh have been in the checkpoints, DUI and uh and the uh Alcamino Police Academy uh erase some flags, right? Because, because we want this person to be a civilian that have not been tied up with any type of uh law enforcement agency. So so they can be a completely transparent and not be biased towards, let's say sympathetic to the police. I I'm not questioning your, 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 your philosophy and your um desire to serve. And also you're committing that you'll be impartial, uh but that raised some, some flag, so let me ask you this question. Uh you know, you can address what I just said, and also, um how did you he- heard about this Civil Service Commission?
I went online, you know, and I was searching into something I can do here in the city and that's something that I saw. Again, because accountability is so important, which is, I'm very passionate. I understand your concern, Mister Montero, on what you're saying, but I give you my word. I will never fail this, the, you know, the system, the laws or the people. Uh may, per- primarily people, I, that is not what I believe, that's not who I am. Which is why I'm passionate to do the right thing and I can, you know, and I can assure you all that I would never be biased just because a person wears a uniform, that means nothing to me. What I'm about is seeking the facts and the truth.
Thank you for the, for the.
Of course, sir, yeah.
Okay, any more, any further questions? No one else? Okay, uh we'll do the Roll Call Vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
I'm going to abstain this time.
Okay, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh abstaining.
Okay, Councilmember Reyes?
Abstaining.
Uh Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Uh the vote reflects uh Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim Valentine voting yes. And um Pa- Councilmember Montero, Councilmember Patterson and Councilmember Reyes English abstaining. Mister City Attorney, how does that fall?
Uh yes, it's approved. The three abstains acquiesce in the majority vote, which is the two, uh both you and Valentine.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so let's just go back to the uh congratulations, sir, and uh
Thank you.
You'll be uh sworn in by our city clerk at some point, he'll uh reach out to you.
Yeah. By tomorrow, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Appreciate the opportunity, good night.
Welcome, uh we're, we're gonna keep your word, okay?
Sir, I prom- sir, I promise you that I I I am about doing the right thing, so.
Alright, thank you, we're gonna keep.
Thank you, Mister Montero.
Alright, thank you, good luck.
Bye bye.
Uh through the Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a go back. Um I, I neglected to mention as a member of my committee Dawn Harris Benson who Benton, who is uh um an employee and a manager of Republic Services. She's been a very valuable member of my committee and unfortunately I neglected to mention her name, so I want to do it now. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so uh we'll move on to the oral communications?
Correct. So during oral communications, speakers have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body should have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the City Manager for Study Investigation Report and or Recommendation. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, we had five uh individuals we called in that would like to speak. Um first, we have Leon.
Hello, Leon? Hi Leon, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is uh Leon and I'm a member of South Bay Community Care, a mutual aid collective that works with community members in a need of essential resources in the South Bay. I'm trying to be effective with my time because I make the following statements, not only speaking for myself, but for a houseless community in Hawthorne that is currently staring down the reality of being further displaced by sweeps carried out by public works. I'll start with the voices that matter most here, that being the houseless, and raise a question passed to me by one of our houseless neighbors. Question follows, if the folks that live in these encampments were to clean and maintain their living spaces in collaboration with organizations like our own, would the city agree to halt all sweeps and allow these citizens to stay where they feel safest and can re- uh best receive community assistance? If the true objective of these sweeps are to clean, then what would the solution that has been offered here is both cost-effective and allows the people in these communities to make the decisions about what takes place where they live. The fact that this request came to me before any elected official points to a lack of cooperation with uh outreach to these people that have failed to uh be housed. And until these people are housed, which is their basic right as human beings, they should be at the very least allowed to have a say in what takes place in their living spaces. And if the city or county or state feel that our houseless neighbors have no right to live on a sidewalk or in a park or in a parking lot, they should work harder to see to it that these people don't have to live in these places to begin with. Again, I rephrase our houseless neighbors' question, what will the city do to work with and not against our houseless community? I yield my time.
Thank you, have a good night. Next, we have uh Maggie. Hello Maggie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Awesome, alright Maggie, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh I don't think I'll be taking my whole three minutes, I know there are other folks calling in. Um but I just wanted to make sure the council is aware that a sweep is being placed in Hawthorne. Um I think there's actually two, one next week and the week after, around the Gulch Encampment. Um though I know these sweeps, of course, aren't being taken um taken on by Hawthorne D D or the city bosses, they're coming from the Board of Supervisors, I believe, and county public work. I think it's really important that um this council be aware of what is happening to the homeless population in our city and that these sweeps are a direct result of our continued failure to not provide any services or safe spaces to be for our homeless neighbors and our homeless constituents. Um I really encourage you, before these sweeps take place, to reach out to your government colleagues, see what can be done to stop this violent displacement as well as to reach out to our unhoused neighbors to find out how they can best be supported in finding permanent supportive housing. Thanks so much.
Thank you Maggie, have a good night. Okay, uh next we are in the middle of calling uh Matt Zarro, let me check if he's on.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Alright, Matt, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Chad Zarro, um I'm a resident here in Hawthorne. Uh I'm calling tonight because once again, uh some of my friends are facing sweeps. Uh they live out on the canal, uh the Dominguez Channel. Uh and they got sweep notices for next week. I'm really troubled by the way that our city is treating our unhoused neighbors. Uh my friends don't deserve this kind of treatment, they are struggling to get their lives back together, working to get off the streets. You know, you guys often like to accuse people of denying services, but I know for a fact that one of these people is working on getting into Project Room Key and getting into housing and that uh he is not, he is not someone who uh is denying services. So, when you sweep people, essentially what they're gonna do is the sheriffs are gonna tell them to move to the next block down. There's nowhere for these people to go, they're not offering them shelter, they're not offering to put them anyplace, they're just telling them they have to move. So what happens? They pack up what they can carry, what they can't carry, the state throws away. They have to go find a new place, just, just down the road. And so who is served by this? Who is served by this? Is the community served by this? Pushing people just a few blocks down? That doesn't make any sense. No, I'm not served by that. You're not served by that, these people aren't going into shelters. All this does is waste money and traumatize people. So I'm asking you, as a city, I'm asking you as leaders of our government, I'm asking you to please consider ending these sweeps and providing help for my friends. Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have um Melissa Matteo. We're gonna be putting her on hold in about five seconds. Ms. Matteo was not available, so now we're trying the last uh caller right now. Okay, our next speaker is G, uh you have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, this is G Talavera from Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. Here's some Black Hawthorne history. On June of twenty nineteen, twenty-four-year-old William Ewell was on his knees with his hands on his head on the corner of the seventy-six on Prairie and El Segundo, surrounded by at least seven cop cars and at least ten officers. Nearly every single officer on the ground. Oh my God, I was totally going off my bed. Okay, I'm ready.
Go, go ahead.
Oh, what I leave on? Nearly every single officer on the ground has their weapon drawn on William, as well as guy who'll teach the woman recording this incident when she saw the fourth HPD car on site. According to Hawthorne Police Officers, Mister Ewell loosely matched the description of a suspect in the area. Even though the Bill of Rights proclaims that each citizen has the right to be innocent until proven guilty, the assumption of guilt was abundantly present in Mister Ewell's racial profiling alongside HPD's horrific display of antagonism on this young black person. Former LAPD Sergeant Gerald Dorsey calmly stated in an interview reviewing the interaction, no, this was an excessive force. This was police officers performing their duties as they're trained, given the information they had at the time. I want to especially highlight with Sergeant Gerald shared, this is a typical officer's performance of quote-unquote duty. Terrorizing young black men is part of a typical officer's performance of duty. Being heavily armed and crowding a single individual is a typical officer's performance of duty. How many incidents like that aren't reported? How many individuals undergo Hawthorne Police Department inflicted trauma? How many community members are endangered by HPDs? When we say defund the police, we don't mean put money toward pro-police community events. We don't mean more body cams, we don't mean more diversity training. Community money should be going to community support, not state-sponsored punishment and control. We want humanizing cultures of an understanding and growth. You can't do that when an officer's typical performance of duty is based in harm and fear. Adjust the demands of the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance and end sweeps. We literally gave you explicit instructions to end homelessness and stop this violence and your inaction is disgusting. Black Lives Matter means every single black life matters. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, G. And was that it?
Um let me check, I think Diana was gonna try to get the last person. Okay, yeah, that's it for tonight.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll declare oral communications.
I'll declare oral communications closed, so order. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seven, approval of the city council minutes for the special meeting of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item nine, the city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eighty-two sixty-one, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California proclaiming March twenty twenty-one as Women's History Month for adoption.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm gonna give a second to Mr. Montero, council member. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
We couldn't hear you.
You're muted, Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
The ordinances, item number fifteen?
Okay, ordinance number two-two-one-one, second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California amending section two-point-one-two-point-zero-one-zero of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, updating the descriptions of various departments to reflect the current composition for adoption.
For discussion, please, to the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I wanna make sure, this is the second reading, so the first reading, there was amended language that included, that's, let me see, ordinance number twenty-two, that's fifteen, I'm gonna go to the item, cause it was included at the last council, but not in this one, where it gives section three, basically, the city attorney authorized to make any minor corrections to the ordinance, as long as it doesn't make any substance changes. I asked if the language could include, should a change occur, it would be brought before the city council for approval.
Yeah, that language is only in there if we add a comma, or we add an and, or we change the numbering, but basically, the substance remains the same. I always bring it back, if there's gonna be any kind of even minor change, but in terms of grammatical, then we make those changes.
Yeah, I just wanna make note that it comes before the council.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, please vote, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
I don't think there was a motion or a second.
No, I thought there was.
No, I asked for discussion.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, I'll second it. Okay, let's roll call vote now.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number sixteen, please.
Okay, ordinance number two-two-one-three, second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California recommending to the city council approval of the amendment of municipal code section two-point-one-eight-point-zero-five-zero setting forth the required qualifications for the appointment to the Civil Service Commission for Adoption.
Okay.
To the chair, go ahead. I just wanted to, maybe to, because the last meeting, I asked Russell to add former electa official on that list, and due to the light of the of the Service Service Commission, also, I would encourage us to include any individual who has worked for law enforcement, work or volunteer for law enforcement, that they would be disqualified up to ten years being serving on the commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'll do is I'll make that amendment, not at the next meeting, but the last meeting in March.
Yeah, so I would table this these ordinance until those add on it, you know, former electa official and any individual that who worked, who did work for the law enforcement agency, work or volunteer, are disqualified for at least ten years to serve on the Service Service Commission.
I'll make a motion.
Just a moment. The, those, the motion and the second are already on the floor, but Mr. City Attorney?
I wasn't sure. Mr. Montero, was your motion to table it?
I want a table so you can have time to include my recommendation that was made, you know, right now, because since the former electa fish was not included.
Okay, I'll just bring it back.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do we have to have the first, the introduction, another introduction, and then another?
Yeah.
Second reading?
Start all over again.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
This is a point of clarification. Am I understanding that if you've ever worked or volunteered for law enforcement, we want a ten-year time and distance from that? And as relates to elected officials, is it also ten years or ever at all?
Well, I will include them being ten years, cause it doesn't, yeah, it's fine.
Ten years for both?
Yeah.
Okay.
If anybody disagrees.
Are you saying council members or?
Yeah, council member, mayor.
Treasurer and city clerk?
Yes, and city clerk, all the electa officials.
Former, yeah.
Former, yeah. To the chair.
Through the chair, can you, can you explain what would be the purpose for excluding former council members from the commission?
Well, it's the same principle that these people could be biased towards whatever decisions that are gonna be made, because it's human resources and especially the review of the police conduct, et cetera, et cetera. So it's kind of tricky that you might have some former politician that, you know, their minds are corrupt. I'm not saying none of us, but there is experience that usually, for example, if you would serve on the military, especially like the Pentagon, for example, you cannot be Secretary of Defense for at least for seven years. Right? They have to be civilian people serving on those capacity. So, so I'm trying to say that we should protect that Service Service Commission, because it's the only resource that we have for our employees to be transparent, not to be judged by former politician that might not like of some people that is still employed with us.
That's fine.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just a further clarification on elected officials, so we talked about ever holding elected office with the City of Hawthorne, or elected office anywhere?
No, no, no.
City of Hawthorne. Okay, so if someone, for instance, was a school board member, they would not be excluded?
Yeah, no.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
City clerk, can you please give us, give us where we're at at this point, cause I don't remember there being a motion or a second, it was just pulled for discussion.
Yeah, so at this point, it's Councilmember Montero wanted to pull it for the next.
Yeah, and I made a motion.
Yeah.
Yes. So, yeah, we want a table until Russell make those revision and bring it back for first and second reading.
Okay.
Item number seventeen, please.
Order, ordinance number two-two-one-four, first reading, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adding a new chapter eleven-point-zero-four, Voting Centers to Title XI Elections, to the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding use of the Sun and Venus Room, the Memorial Center as voting centers for Los Angeles County Consolidated Elections. For introduction.
I'll introduce it.
That was my idea.
Well.
It's okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem, we're gonna give it to Mayor Pro Tem on the introduction. Item number eighteen, please.
Ordinance number two-two-one-seven, first reading, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, repealing chapter fifteen-point-four-eight Flood Plane Management Regulations and reenacting a new chapter fifteen-point-four-eight Flood Plane Management Regulations for introduction.
I'll introduce.
To the chair.
Yes.
Can I ask a question, City Attorney? On the back of the, of the ordinance, the staff report, excuse me, on the back of the staff report, where it talks about adoption of future regulations should flood conditions in the area change, could, could we, could we maybe amend that to include and/or natural disasters?
You know what, that language actually came directly from a FEMA consultant.
Okay.
So we were, we were asked to basically copy it verbatim, and this is, and their requirement was that we adopt it and that it become effective no later than April twenty-first.
There's not a problem, there's not a problem accepting it, adopting it, I was just curious if maybe in these types of, you know, uncertain times that we've been seeing across the world, right, that we just include things that of a, of a natural disaster, should anything like this affect these types of projects?
Okay, and what I'll do is I'll talk to the building and safety director about adding that language in a future amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so general matters, city manager, your oral report on item twenty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen with everybody. Can everyone see my green screen here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So this item is a direction item that we're really looking for prioritization of priorities from the city council. And, you know, as way as background, there's no shortage of challenges in local government, and, you know, as on the staff side, we realize, and I'm sure on the elected side, you see, there's many things that we'd like to do and some things we can't do all the time, and so the need for the city council as policymakers for the community to prioritize our resources and programs is very important. Over the last couple of months, I've worked individually with each of the council members to develop a list of potential priorities that could be considered for the next fiscal year, which would start on July first. And I've synthesized this into the agenda bill that you have in your packet today, and I'm gonna review with you this evening. And there were a lot of overlap on a lot of the feedback I got, so of the twenty-two items that we're gonna go through, my, my, my hope is that there isn't much overlap left over that we need to deal with. And one of the, one of the, one of the key points I wanna make is that after coming out of this exercise, the hope from the staff side is that the council has really focused on what the priorities for the next budget year would be. And that's not only a budget in terms of dollars budgeted in certain programs, or initiatives, or contracts, or projects, but sometimes even more importantly, the allocation of staff time necessary to actually do that work. And so not only does it take us dollars to fund a program, it also takes someone oftentimes in a chair doing that work and making sure we have the right resources allocated to get that done. So the, the process that staff's recommending is that we review the priorities that have been outlined in the agenda bill, and then the council discuss them to make sure they're both understood and clear and not redundant. And then what we're going to be asking the council to do is engage in what's commonly known as a dot voting exercise. And if we weren't in a pandemic, what we would likely be doing is trying to meet in a community room or in a community center with big whiteboards and post-it notes and having brainstorming type sessions where the council could not only have the conversation we're hoping to have this evening, but, but go up and close and look at these, these items that have been written on the board and rank them with dots, and so with each council member getting a certain number of dots, the, the items that come away with the most dots would be the ones that were the priorities. We've gotta adjust that format a bit because we are in a, in the pandemic and on Zoom and in a virtual setting, but I think we can accomplish most of that this evening. Following the dot voting exercise, come back and review the established priorities with the council. So, in not priority order on the staff side, or any interpretation here, really just tried to organize these in a logical fashion and near alphabetical order. The first item that we have is Arts in Hawthorne, which was understood to be partnering with local arts organizations such as the Hawthorne Arts Complex to expand art programs throughout the city. The second item, a business-friendly and customer-service-oriented city hall, which there were quite a few bits of feedback I got from different council members, and I tried to synthesize this all into one, really, I think, community friendliness-type city hall item, meaning to improve systems and processes and establish service levels to ensure city hall services are easily accessible and provided in a timely manner to residents and businesses. Also develop and implement an internal program to establish the city's customer service standards. Number three is the cannabis ordinance and regulations that we're already on our way to start developing, and we're gonna talk about this this evening, but this would essentially be the development implementation of that ordinance to allow and regulate cannabis businesses in the city. Number four is COVID-nineteen response and recovery, which, you know, is a very summary item, but really looks to develop and implement a multi-year plan to provide support and resources to residents and businesses to help the city emerge vibrant and strong from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Number five, cleanliness of the city, strengthening programs to address municipal code violations and illegal dumping throughout the city, also improve the cleanliness of our park facilities. Number six, development standards, review and update, review and potentially update the city's development standards for residential and commercial areas. Number seven, economic development program, establish a formal economic development program to attract, retain, and support businesses and grow the economy in Hawthorne. Number eight, emergency preparedness, update the city's emergency management program to develop systems and structures to ensure the city is prepared to respond to and recover from emergencies and/or disasters. Number nine, the Hawthorne Airport, review and pursue amendments to the related lease agreements to increase the benefits provided to the community. Number ten, the Hawthorne Mall site, pursue solutions to redevelop the former Hawthorne Mall site. Number eleven, reduce incidences of homelessness and the related impacts to neighborhoods and business areas. Number twelve, increase homeownership, homeownership, develop programs to increase homeownership within the city. Number thirteen, increase low-income housing, develop programs to increase the development of low-income housing within the city. Number fourteen, improve access to broadband internet service, and this would be working with telecoms, utility companies, and private developers to improve access to broadband internet service in residential areas. Number fifteen, improve community outreach, develop a formal community outreach program to ensure information from the city is widely communicated and received by residents and businesses. Number sixteen, long-term financial health of the city, continue progress towards improving the long-term financial health of the city. Number seventeen, neighborhood-oriented development, support and pursue policies at the state and local level to focus on neighborhood-oriented development as opposed to transit-oriented development. Number eighteen, community, new community center, design and construct a new facility to enable the city to better serve its residents. Number nineteen, parking solutions, improve access to parking in residential neighborhoods and on Hawthorne Boulevard. Number twenty, professional development of the workforce, develop policies and allocate funding to ensure employees receive training on a regular basis to improve their skills and professional opportunities. Number twenty-one, public safety, work with the police department to ensure policing is effective, responsive, and addresses issues of importance to the community. And lastly, number twenty-two, a strategic plan, and this would be to develop a strategic plan that establishes the city's goals and objectives for the next three to five years.
Mr. City, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
The sheet that you gave us does not include four of those that were on there.
Yes, and I will get that to you, we're gonna talk about that right now. So.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
I wanna have a time of further question, the comments with the council, and confirm that these are the proposed priorities, I'm sorry, proposed priorities. The council does wanna be essentially ranking, and then in regards to the mayor's comment, yes, there, there are four items on that list of twenty-two that staff is recommending essentially be pulled from the, the, the list and not be voted upon, because staff's understanding is that these are items that the council has already decided that we wanna begin working on, or should be working on. Among those are the cannabis ordinance, of which we've already received direction last month to be working on. Obviously, COVID-nineteen response and recovery, we've got, we're currently operating under a proclaimed state of emergency right now due to COVID. The long-term financial health of the city, my understanding is this has been unanimous a goal of the city for many years, and that the council would wanna continue working in that direction. And then professional development of the workforce, in my tenure with the city, I don't think this has actually been brought up at a city council meeting, however, the proposed party does resonate with me and However, um the the proposed party does resonate with me and uh their department heads and I are already starting to work in this direction. And my hope would be that this is something that the council could just um consider something that's gonna be one of the four automatic priorities that that we would end up for next fiscal year.
To the chair?
Yes.
Um thank you, mayor. So um city manager, thank you for um, you know, the 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 ongoing list, right? Cause there's never a uh uh no more than three, no more than ten. As council members, you know, my passions might not be your passions and your passions might not be mine. But at the end of the day, I think we try and work collectively to address the community and the people's needs, and that's important to me. So some of the things that came up, which is um, you know, number two, business-friendly, customer service-oriented, I don't necessarily think that this should be part of the list. I think this is something that department heads and city managers should be addressing altogether. Uh it shouldn't be something that the council um should continuously be hearing, especially from those people that are calling us nonstop complaining about uh bad customer service here in our city. That's an internal uh human resources issue. That's an in- an internal supervisor uh employee issue. So with regards to professional development of workforce and business-friendly customer service-oriented city, I think those are kind of hand in hand. And you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be um, you know, including obviously customer service oriented as a priority. That should be a given. Uh you know, straight shot. Um and all of us have heard it throughout our 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 campaign seasons and and uh you know, it's an ongoing thing. So but I I do need to make a a a public, a public comment to those that may be watching today and thinking, wow, uh council members are having to choose one over the other. And you know, I'll be the first to say that um all of these uh recommendations are great recommendations, and I understand the need to just streamline some of these importance uh issues and concerns uh to staff so they could be better prepared and and ready to work on those. And um there's new concerns, right, that that we have. There's COVID, there's homeless. There's a number of things that are considered a priority for me. I'm just gonna talk about myself. So um where others that I might not select or vote on doesn't necessarily mean it's a priority. But uh it makes it challenging for us to have to make a selection one through ten based off what's before us. And I don't want in any way uh the constituents or community or those stakeholders looking tonight to believe for a minute that um you know, your concern, your issue is not a priority for me. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I hope that number two and professional development workforce is something that's collectively done and not necessarily placed on us as having to list it as, you know, either a priority or not, cause I'll tell you right now, it's not one of my priorities. Because again, I look to the leadership of supervisors, department heads, and city manager to regulate that. And I I I say that very vigorously because these are ongoing concerns that we've been having for years, years and years when it comes to customer service and how people are treated. So um uh and then there's some other things um that I feel are very important too. But um here we are, we have to uh you know, give some kind of direction. This is just a start. It doesn't mean that, you know, um any of the, any of the priorities that I don't select are uh any less. So that's just a disclosure I wanna put out there to the people that may be watching.
Alright.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanna say that um I think that um I wanna thank uh for, I I wanna thank Eric for um for giving us the opportunity to make these selections. And I do understand that every single one of these is important, and there are probably others that are also important as well. But I think staff is um correct to ask us what do we want them to concentrate on? They can't concentrate on everything. So um I'm very grateful that they've given us this opportunity to show, show what we, what what is most meaningful to us in this year. Because this is one year and I would like to continue this process every year. But for this one year that's coming up, what is it that, what are the ten things that we want staff to concentrate on? And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go ahead and make the selection. Because um while every single one of these is important, um I think giving staff the direction to focus resources and focus time and effort on ten of them, I think is going to be very helpful. And I, and it 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 um increases the 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 probability that they'll all get done. I think that's the, I think that's the goal, that we we give, give, we give the um city manager and staff goals that they actually can attain. So, thank you again.
Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I I have to say, yeah, thank you, uh Eric, uh for giving us this list. When, when we talk about this list, it's like, this is almost like a uh a mini uh strategic plan for the city, right? Uh because we don't have a concrete strategic plan that we can say, we have this short goal. Uh immediate goals or short term, long term. And so this basically is going to give us an idea, a beginning that we will have goals and objectives uh for at least for uh twelve months uh to deal with some severe issues um that our community is out there expressing the need. And we need to deliver, right? So that's what it's all about. Um like Eric mentioned, you know, there is some items over here on this list that we've been doing it all the time. Uh for example, emergency preparedness. I know the city has been very involved doing emergency preparedness for all this year, you know, that I've been attending the meetings as a as a public audience and then the city uh council. So emergency preparedness probably it'll be part almost of the COVID response and recovery because we on the mode now of emergency, right? Uh and the same time also as the public safety. Public safety, we have concentrated a lot of resources and emphasis on public safety. So all of those goes hand in hand uh when we're looking into what we want to deliver uh for at least twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh to me, I'm gonna vote for those priority that is going to create jobs in Hawthorne, economically developed. I'm gonna emphasize on strategic plan. I'm gonna emphasize on a a a a another, the, a new specific plan, not just, not just for Hawthorne Boulevard, for the entire city. What we wanna see on Hawthorne Boulevard. What we wanna see on Prairie. What we wanna see on Rose Grand. What we wanna see on Inglewood. So those are kinda things that we need to start thinking about for not the immediate, but in order, because this could be a precedent that what will happen uh in one year, in two years, in three years, in four years, okay? So I'm going to uh be able to tell them that we need to concentrate on issues that's going to create uh jobs, that's part of economic development, uh that's gonna bring new business to Hawthorne. Yes, we have to be business-friendly, and that's what I I, you know, I understand about this business-friendly and customer service. Uh that it's it's kinda important, but I do agree with uh Ms. English uh that the staff could, you know, begin to implement that without our, without our directive, right? Uh because, but we know uh some of those department has to be uh trained, and that's what the the profession development comes into play. Uh how to uh give the staff new tools to implement those business-friendly. How to create a new, uh bring business to Hawthorne and not give them a lot of impediment, not put a lot of barriers. So we should never say no to nothing. Just say yes, we'll try to do whatever we can to bring you in. So we have to streamline the process. So those are the kinda things that I'm trying to understand. And and we know homeless is an issue, so we need to talk about homeless. We need to talk about overhousing. Uh we need to talk about, like I said, create jobs so people will not be homeless. It give them job, give them a resource that they need, mental health, et cetera, et cetera. Um so that is what I'm looking at. I'm looking at a a city that could create a plan that will begin to address all these issues, even parking. How, I want us to solve the parking problem. So um so those are the kinda things that we need to focus. And I believe, like I said, I'm going to make sure that uh priorities is going to be uh those that is up the, on the news every day that we listen to our constituent uh that they have concerns, you know? Uh and and I'm glad to see that we're gonna give, uh we're gonna talk about small business loans. We're gonna talk, you know, we're still giving rental assistance. So those are the kinds of things that we need to look at, how to make our constituent and and to be able for them to get out of poverty and be able to sustain themselves, to be self-sufficient. So that's my, my goal.
Alright, Mister uh city manager, how do you would like to, to proceed? You wanna come pick these up or what?
So I I think, yeah, I've heard uh two council members say that um the business-friendly, customer service-oriented city hall really is is linked to professional development and therefore um should be potentially not considered as part of the exercise, and we're gonna link these together. Is there consensus on that?
Mister city manager, that was obviously some, you got that from somebody who hears uh is on this board. All the, all the council members have to do is just not pick it if they don't like it. So
It's not the, the Mister, Mister Mayor to the, you come, uh it's uh the word like is not appropriate used. You need to
Prioritize. If you don't wanna choose it because it's not part of your ten, then you don't have
No, 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 no. Because, because you see, all of these items that Eric have gave us, it's important. Okay, so that's what I'm saying. This is like, almost like a mini strategic plan. What can we do in twelve months? And then what can we do in in twenty-four months? So this is a, is an exercise to prioritize, not like we don't like this, we don't like that.
No, that's fine. That is, that is fine. That's fine. I understand. But what, what if I was the one that actually gave him this one and he decided to put it on here? I'm not saying it was. So I mean, ul- ultimately, you're right. Okay, you're acknowledging that there's some validity in it and that we're every single one of these items we should be addressing. But uh we should just go through the exercise and uh whoever needs to I'm choosing only seven of these. I'm not choosing up to ten.
Like, let me give you, let me give you an example. For example, art in Hawthorne. That's, that's a great idea. And but we can get the uh Parks and Recs Commission and the Youth Commission involved uh with the staff to bring this art into into our community. So so i- i- if sometime it's not even get, it's not even involve money. It's involve resources that we can bring to our community, but we have to drive that process. So we can have the commissioners Parks and Recs and the Youth Commission involved to bring all these, even the senior commissions, because you know, they they like art. Uh to bring art to Hawthorne.
Okay, so that's fine. No, I I acknowledge that, of course, absolutely. Everything you're saying is, points are well taken. So we can, after you've given the feedback, we could just go through this exercise with the feedback included that we've just received as a board. And we could just choose up, I'm choosing seven. I'm not even gonna choose ten myself. So then we could just go ahead and just uh see where this all comes out, right, Mister? Is that what you'd like to do today, Mister City Manager?
Yeah, so I I think um, you know, let me share my screen again and we can get back where I was leaving off. So I think what I I really wanna make sure that I'm I'm, that we've got concurrence at the council, that the four items that I originally recommended not being voted on are are automatically gonna be considered priorities for the next year. Is there consensus on that? This is cannabis, COVID nineteen response and recovery, long-term financial health of the city, and professional development workforce.
So you're saying, we already established as, uh we've already seen that we've established those as straight priorities and we don't have to even include them.
Yeah, and 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 I would include on that list, Mister Mayor and Eric, I would include emergency preparedness, number eight. Uh and number, number twenty-one, public safety, because those are things that is constantly in move, in 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 progress.
Yeah, I I agree on that. I agree on that. We, that that is part of our efforts already, so they shouldn't be there. Those are not like new, they're not new uh efforts, new ideas.
Taking stuff off of this list, you know, just be ten things going here to vote on in the first place.
Well, that's what I was saying initially, you know what I'm saying?
Through the chair. Never ends. It's taking stuff off one list, putting it on the other list, just on the eighteen and then discuss afterwards.
Mister City Manager, what's your, what's your intention? What do you, what would you like us for us to do? Because we're, we're kinda making you jump up and down a little bit.
So what what I don't want is to walk out of this meeting with everything on this list approved. Just because of the lack of of clarity as to what real priorities are.
Okay.
Uh however, I I I do think that, you know, part of the the intention was to have the council discuss these items, potentially combine or link some. Um and 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 if we, if this list goes from eighteen, let's just say for sake of argument to sixteen, I'd like to take one or two of your votes away so that we we don't have um a- a- we still have a meaningful process at that point.
I, through the chair, I think, I think at this point, we need to vote and then discuss them to uh at, discuss what we come up with. As opposed to having the discussion first and then
I agree with this vote.
I think we should vote first.
There's nothing official. We're gonna vote and then discuss the results.
Or through the chair?
Go ahead.
Oh, to tell you the truth, I would prefer for us to go uh item by item and and give uh our city manager and employees some direction, like I just gave you on the art in Hawthorne. And I said, this could be done by this and this and that. So sometimes, you know, we might know stuff that Eric might not know. I'm hoping he knows everything, but, but I'm saying, because we've been here longer than Eric, for example, right? So we know sometime that this stuff has been done or in the process of of being accomplished, or they are, or they are in progress. So 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 some of these uh item that we, if we go to from one to to say to the twenty-one, we can tell him, you know, this could go this way, this can go that way, it's gonna, and then if we end up with five or ten, then we, then we prioritize those on the vote.
Okay, so uh my, this is my piece of feedback.
So we can't just go along with the city manager recommended, we can always discuss these things individually with city manager anytime.
Look.
I agree, I agree. I think we should vote and then discuss it. Discuss what we come up with.
Look, and I agree with that also, the purpose being
Alright, I agree. Let's go.
No, no, hold on, hold on, let me finish. You know, the purpose being that we we already knew this was coming. We already knew that this was the format. And uh changing the, basically, the city manager needs to focus on the top three things here. He can't, you know, the thing is, all the other ones will be addressed as at um ancillary, ancillary um projects to these main projects. And so that's the point at which we can start considering those.
But Mister Mayor, it's nowhere to say that uh it's gonna be three priorities. It says, once the votes that get
Okay, yeah.
That three vote is the one that's gonna be concentrated, okay?
That's okay. That's a good.
He's not saying three priority. He's saying that we're gonna vote, if if one item get three vote, that
Okay.
That's considered one priority.
That's what it says.
Correct, Mister, Mister City Manager?
Correct. And with your permission, I I will explain what we're going to do next.
Just go ahead and just go through the whole thing. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so what what we would like you to do is to to take your your worksheet and of the eighteen items on there uh prioritize them. And so essentially um no, uh circle no more than ten of the items. Um items that receive uh three or more votes uh will become priorities for the next fiscal year. Um fill out the worksheet. Um and then, we wanna do this in the meeting because uh uh open meeting laws in in California, we we can't go to recess while you're, while you're voting. So when you're done uh filling out your worksheet, let me know. I'll come get it. And then uh once I have them, I I'm respectfully asking for a a approximate ten to fifteen minute recess for uh the the votes to be compiled, and then we'll reconvene and we'll review the results.
So, can I, could we?
Mister Mayor?
Okay, go ahead, Mister.
Congratulations. Eric, so, uh so basically, we, do we have just to put a check or we put number one?
I'm asking that that you circle the the title. Here and and there's no more than ten. If you have, if you vote for more than ten, it's gonna be problematic to to sort them out. Alright, thank you.
Mister City Manager, can you guys, can you do this in the background while we just continue with the rest of the meetings? We just wanna move along. That's gonna be fifteen, and we have a long action discussion like item list. We would like for you to do it.
I I I I I will count the votes as quick as I can. I'd I'd like to be engaged on the other topics you're gonna be discussing in case my attention's needed.
Well, how about the closed sessions? Mister City, Mister City Attorney, do any of these closed sessions involve our city uh city manager? Mister City Attorney?
Yeah, he should be there.
Okay.
Mayor, I I I I will try to get a six-minute recess.
Okay, aim for six-minute recess, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Is it, before we recess, um or what we could do is do our, um what we could do instead of breaking is have the city, city council members report. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we won't break. You you do your thing, and we're gonna have our reports from our city council members. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, just so we can keep on going, alright? Alright, thank you very much. Uh Mister City Clerk, can we hear from you?
Sure. Um I have just a few things. So first of all, I wanna thank everyone for watching from home.
Doctor Ben, as I apologize.
No worries.
Everyone completed their their voting. Can I pick them all up? Everyone completed their, their voting, can I pick them all up, or there's someone still?
Yeah, I got them right here.
Okay, I'm gonna come pick them up, thank you.
Alright, Mister City Clerk.
Are you guys sure? I'm just kidding, alright, no, yeah, so first of all, I just wanna uh thank everyone uh who is watching from home. Um basically, hold on, I'm trying to. Exit my full screen, um yeah, so basically, I wanted to thank them from, uh for watching from home, but also uh for those who provided public comments. Um so just a few updates, so first, the Community Service Department will continue to host free virtual uh programming for families. All activities involve prizes, participants must re- register online. Uh their programming schedule includes a scavenger, a spring scavenger hunt on March sixth and seventh. And a Saint Patrick's Day themed trivia night on March nineteenth. Um next uh topic is regarding COVID. Uh unfortunately, as I was shared by uh Councilmember Montero, um there continues to be a huge number of deaths. Um there are a hundred and fifty seven deaths in L A County today, um and as he shared, we surpassed twenty thousand deaths as a county. Um so it's a critical time for us, so it's important to stay isolated and when you do have to go out, please wear your mask. Uh in regards to vaccines, if you're age sixty five or older, a healthcare worker or a long term care facility resident. Please go to vaccinaylacounty.com or call eight three three five four zero zero four seven three. Between eight AM and eight thirty PM, seven days a week for assistance with appointments. Um I attempted to make an appointment today, um and appointments were available. Um so please, please get vaccinated, it's extremely important um to be vaccinated, um and that's all on my end, thank you and good night.
Okay, um City Treasurer, Gregory Fallon?
Good evening, good evening, everyone, uh just two quick things, uh I wanna thank the Chief Ishi for uh doing a Zoom call with our, our community. That was really helpful and it really got us all to appreciate uh having uh our own Hawthorne Police Department. Uh he really got a lot of people to turn out for the Zoom call, we really appreciated that. Uh and then also uh, you know, I just about Black History Month, uh it's not just for black people. Black history is really valuable, especially for Americans. Um what I did this, this month was I uh listened to a book called Up From Slavery. And uh it's a really incredible book by Booker T. Washington and uh I learned a lot from it. What I really learned was that I'm, I'm a total weenie compared to him, you know, all the things he went through and things he accomplished. Uh and it was kind of uh invigorating to hear a story like that, especially in a time like this, when it's easy to complain. Uh so I just wanted to uh talk about that and that sums it up, thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you so much, um ca- council member Reyes English, please?
Thank you, Mayor, um I had an opportunity to visit a business, um automated pizza and it's um. Made up of former employees from SpaceX engineers that are coming up with um. A new endeavor with regards to how food delivery is brought to you. I say that because uh the concept has to do with uh like a pizza drive through where you order your pizza. By the time you get to the window, five minutes later, your pizza's ready. Um you know, with COVID and all the things that have come from COVID, new ideas and thoughts on creating business. Um this was just one concept that was implemented, developed by again. Uh creative minds, engineers, uh former employees of SpaceX and look forward to working in collaboration with them. Uh they do, they do test pizzas, they don't wanna throw anything away. I did ask them to direct some of the pizzas that they may have uh to our police department, to our community fridge. Um to our churches in the community and so. If uh you could please email me and let me know if you'd like to maybe be a recipient of some pizzas. Um good pizzas too, there's different uh kinds of pizzas that they make and it's a test, I say a test kitchen. Uh but the idea is to bring automated um delivery through um. You know, a fast track process in which food is, is made and delivered ultimately to the, to the patrons. So this is something new, um something similar to um food trucks and things like this. But uh just the process um and the idea of pizza is unique, because it's never been done. So um that's one, and then um. I have uh, I have heard again from constituents uh regarding parking in our city of Hawthorne. And uh this is something that I want to um really, you know, take heed to and address. Um I've noticed too that there's been a lot, a lot of new uh communities that have implemented the um. This, the uh parking on the street, the white striping to assure that vehicles are parked within. Their uh parking space and not um taking up all this unnecessary parking. Uh it's not fair for others that are uh off to work and have to come back later to find parking. And it's being eaten up by one car and three spaces um ultimately being able to fit, so. I really want our city manager to um, you know, um work on those and, and not have to wait for, you know, some. Feasibility study, but at least implement those uh in areas that be, that could be helpful now. Um and especially, you know, common sense, it's very easy, streets that are one sided parking, ultimately that can't be open to the other side. These are the ones that we should start looking at, that could implement the white striping for vehicles to be able to park effectively. And uh with, within their space, so that's important, um. Other than that, uh no other, I wouldn't say there was necessarily other things to talk on, other than. Some um, some things I'd like to see. Um. Be brought back for council, um. But that, that would be later, that'll be later, I'll bring those later, we're not discussing the action items yet, right?
No, this is just your final reports.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are you, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, uh Councilmember Patterson?
Let me unmute, let me uh thank the community for paying attention to, to the council meetings and those that spoke from making your voices heard. Yeah, you know, I value, um and I know all the council people do value, kinda hearing the, the. Hearing straight from the people's mouth, what's important to you and what you value, so appreciate that. Uh I, I wanted to, just a quick shout out to Sergeant Nichols and Officer Yoshida, um reached out to them for a little bit of support and doing some. Some things in the community and they've just been very, very helpful, I really appreciate their dedication to helping the community and their willingness to. Should be of assistance uh for me. Um shoot, I wasn't prepared to, to give this early, usually I'm, I'm gonna wanna comment on something that we've talked about, but. Um I, I'm excited to kinda go through the rest of the meeting and, and identify some ways we, we can support. Our business community and continue to support our um, our residents, right, they're having a tough time during this whole pandemic. I think uh it's our priority uh as a city to make sure we serve the people and, and making sure that that's, that's our priority. Uh make sure we're, we're delivering great services uh to our residents and that we put together a, a good plan. For not just get through the pandemic, but post pandemic, so this is gonna be over sooner or later, and we need to make sure that we're prepared. Um and that we're moving the city in the right direction, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, uh Councilmember Montero?
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, uh yeah, again, I echo the sentiment of my colleagues, uh thank you for the public for to be involved. But that's what we're here to listen to you and to do the best we can to address the issues. Uh like Miss English said about the parking, um that is what, you know, I would already ask uh Eric. And the public worst to see if actually the city can paint all the curves in residential area white uh tea. So that two cars can park, uh so not just one car, so to have like the nine feet in e- in each direction. So um I'm hoping, you know, they're looking for some funding through the metro, Major A, Major M to, to, to do that work. Uh also, I want to congratulate, you know, Kimberly Mack, because so far she have give twenty four. Uh tenants assistant program, so twenty four people, uh families have take advantage of the program, so uh continue to do good work. And I'm hoping that number will increase. Um also, uh I wanted to ask, uh I don't know if Vaughn is online, but if, oh yeah, he's there. Um because uh last meeting, Miss Valentine talked about the uh for us to work with the landlords to house the homeless. So there is a program out there that the pet, you know, the people system, the homeless. Uh have a program that is sponsored by Lhasa, by the Lake County Homeless Authority, uh thanks to our Major H Dollar. That actually can work with the, uh with the landlords and pay the landlords up to three years. Uh to house homeless that have uh housing assistant program, like section eight vouchers, if they have uh. Some other federal vouchers, some slick uh accounting vouchers, so they, they can actually can house the homeless. And the, this program pays for three years to their rent. So I want to maybe Vaughn can schedule a presentation uh to the council. Now maybe the next meeting or the meeting after, to bring Pat to give that presentation, because I did attend it. Uh uh Zoom seminar that it was a tremendous, you know, show of collaboration with a lot of agency. Uh that they have money that they will give the landlords, even uh you know, se- security. For damage and stuff of the property, you know, up to ten years, okay? So um I want us to, to listen to that program and make sure that we can reach out to the landlords. And maybe even have a town hall meeting later on with the landlords to, to, to talk about the program, so maybe they can be interesting. Uh to rent to the homeless, but they will be guaranteed monthly rent by, by the program, okay? Uh the other program that I wanna talk to you about is the Clean Power Alliance. Uh because you know, the Clean Power Alliance of Hawthorne is part of it, right now we have thirty two cities and two counties, I know Ventura County, L A County. And uh we have surplus one million customers. And right now they have a program, because you know Hawthorne is part of the Clean Power Alliance, so people can buy uh renewable energy. But we have so, because they have three stages, the, the clean power, the lean and the one hundred percent. So right now Hawthorne is on that uh, the lean power. That is, is less, is less money, right, the rate is cheaper. But if you are willing to support the environment and get more renewable energy into your home. The Clean Power Alliance is giving uh the customers twenty percent discount. If you go to one hundred percent, if you go from the lean to one hundred percent clean power, right? So they're giving this twenty percent discount to the diesel vantage communities. And Hawthorne is one of those diesel vantage communities that people do not have money to pay a, a tremendous electric bill. But if you go from the lean to the clean power, if you are Clean Power Alliance customers, even you got your bill from Edison. But on the, on, on the last two pages of your bill, you will see that you are Clean Power Alliance client. So if you call them, if you said you wanna be part of the power share. They can actually give you twenty percent of your discount if you go from lean to one hundred percent renewable energy. Okay, so uh what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna send this uh, the uh website address. To the, to the um Eric Chavez to put in our, in our communication, in our social media, in our. Uh TV uh so people can go and learn, because they have the explanation in English, Spanish, Korean, Mandarin. So to explain how this uh one hundred percent energy will work for you, okay? Uh I wanna give a directive, I don't know if uh Russell uh for next meeting for discussion. Uh let's talk about term limit for the commissioners. Cause I know some of the commission has already term limit, but I think some of them do not. So, so can you bring up for discussion, uh how can we do a uniform, you know, term limit for the commission? Because the commission should not be for life, because we need to recycle new bodies, new people, new minds with fresh ideas, okay?
Okay.
Uh so bring, bring that up, um. Also, I wanna shout out, you know, even, you know, the governor of California nuisance has not been a, an outstanding governor. But he's been doing okay for the people, uh so he announced today that everybody that have low income. Is gonna receive six hundred dollar from the state, not federal stimulus, this is the fact, is a, is a state stimulus package. That everybody that is low income is going to receive six hundred dollar from the state of California. And he have put two billion dollars to help the small business, but this small business is not a grant, it's not a giving money, it's a loan. So they're gonna have all these programs coming from the state of California to help uh the people, the low income people and the small business. So, so at least our government is working for us and I'm looking forward for us, City of Hawthorne, to continue the rental assistant program. And we're going to probably give a director to create a small business loan or grant to, to help this business. Uh pay for their business license and also to revamp themselves, to reopen, okay, that's what we need to be, keep in mind.
Councilmember Montero, real quick, um it was not just low income, but undocumented also.
That's true, yeah, thank you, so uh, so good things are coming and we keep our fingers crossed uh and um. I know probably Miss Valentine will mention the food drive on Friday, right?
Right.
Okay, alright, so uh that's it for now and God bless and thank you for being part of this great city.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes, thank you, so I want to uh piggyback on uh what uh Councilmember Montero said about the landlord incentives. So when I raised this uh at the city council meeting earlier, la- a couple of weeks ago. Um I believe there was a negative response, because I was saying that the city of San Diego had implemented a landlord incentives program. And I wanted our city to look into it to see if there was something that uh, that we could perhaps use from that program. So I'm glad to see the Councilmember Montero has come around to my way of thinking, that this is something that we should be looking at. Um as a possibility, um you know, as, 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 as a possibility for. Relieving and reducing our homeless population, so um I'm glad to see that, that, that's something that we can agree on. And I do, I do want to support that in that, that initiative, I would like for us to look into that, I think that's uh. That's something that's very positive and very promising. Um. I want to uh mention the free food drive through giveaway on Friday, um and I want to thank Supervisor Holly Mitchell. Um I had originally um approached her office and asked if, because I had found out that um. The uh, the super, the, all of the supervisors were participating in food giveaways in various cities. And I approached her office to see if that was something that could be done in Hawthorne. And yes, we, we were able to coordinate with her office, I want to thank her for giving Hawthorne the opportunity. Because we have a lot of need in our city, um so on Friday, there will be a free food drive through giveaway. Uh from nine to twelve at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center, uh thirty eight fifty one West El Segundo Boulevard. It is free to the public, I am encouraging all of the pastors, I, I sent, I sent an email to all of the pastors. To um, to uh distribute the information to their communities. Um if there are any nonprofits that are listening, uh and I would like to also encourage them to give this information to their constituents. We um, we, it is on our website, the information is on the website, um and um. Please, we don't want this food to go to waste and apparently they're sending enough food for twenty five hundred people, so we do not want this to go to waste. So I encourage everyone who is within the sound of my voice, who knows someone who has food insecurity. To please go ahead and um, and give this information to that, to them, so that they can take advantage of this. Um I want to uh just respond and I, and I, I'm very grateful, I'm glad to see that the community comes together. And um, and, and, and gives us their input as to what the things they want and the things that. Um that, 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 that even that they're opposed to and I, I encourage the community, I encourage the community to. Uh to give us their input, because we won't know unless we hear from them what it is that they need. I have to push back a little bit on the con- the, the. The, the uh describing our police department in negative terms. Quite frankly, I think our police department has done so much for this community. Um I, I appreciate the fact that there may be poss- that there may be incidences, incidences in which the public feels as though. Um I I appreciate the fact that there may be poss- that there may be incidences incidences in which the public feels as though. Um they perhaps were not treated fairly. And they want to push back on that and I I I do not discourage them for saying so. I do discour- I do however, have to say that um describing the poli- our police. In the kinds of terms that I heard tonight, uh terrorizing young black men, I think that's something that is way over the top. I do not support that kind of language describing our police department because I do not believe our police department does that. So um using talking points to describe our police department is not something that I support. And I want uh I, if you're going to speak about our police and about our council members and about anyone else in our city, please do so respectfully. So that's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, ca- thank you, Councilmembers, um city treasurer, city clerk, councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tim. So thank you all to all our residents for participating, all the feedback that we get. Um and uh yes, I kind of also agree with uh Mayor Pro Tim with regards to some of the language. Used to describe both, you know, the police efforts and also our efforts on homelessness. Um I think uh the city of Hawthorne stands above all the neighboring South Bay cities and what has been done. To address homelessness issues. There is room to in to grow. There's more that we can do. But of all the cities in this neighboring area, we're the ones that all the neighboring cities are looking towards. Uh for uh examples and guidance on implementing programs to help, to help. And that's what we're doing, we're helping. And we have a great team, we, from Jesse, the homeless services coordinator, a mental services uh representative. Uh and other resources that we bring. So um I mean, it's this is. This this feedback has been going on, but as as uh we periodically, we just remind the residents on what we're doing and uh. And uh we've been receiving a lot of great feedback from our residents who live here. And uh from even some of the homeless individuals as well who have benefited from these programs. So that's really encouraging as well. Um but everybody's free to express themselves in a respectful, constructive manner. And I also uh would like to say. You can always tear people down, you can always say what's wrong, you can always say that what's the problem. But I like to hear some solutions. I like to see how the these ideas that people are coming up with can contribute to solve the problem. Whatever problem they're com- uh that they're discussing. And if they could also help sh- show us how realistically these things can be funded and supported. Okay, so I like to maybe encourage that type of approach. Uh but of course, people are free to approach this however they want. Um but uh we definitely want to see improvements in all those areas, policing, uh the homeless issue, et cetera, so. Uh there's always room to grow in every single area, so I'm not opposed to anything that's been said. It's just the manner in which it's being said and the constructive aspect of it all. Um so that's it for me. I think we do have a a lot of items here that hopefully we can uh make th- make it through. Mister City Manager, where are you at with your tally?
Uh we're ready to go back to item number twenty and review the results, so.
Uh through the chair, I need a couple of minutes, Mister Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, well, are you okay with him just kind of, okay, you want us to wait for you, is that what you said?
You don't have to wait, but I do need a couple of minutes.
Oh, okay, so you're just letting us, okay, so whatever it is, he'll report it back to you once you step back in. Okay, go ahead, Mister City Manager.
So um I I've tallied all the worksheets and let me share my screen again and I'll show you where we ended up. Can everyone see this uh colored sheet here?
Okay.
So we've got the the four existing priorities that are continuing into the next fiscal year. And then out of the eighteen other items, we've got these ones that were targeted for, there's ten of ten of these that are targeted for. Uh priorities, additional priorities for next fiscal year. So those would be development standards, review and update, five votes from all council members. Economic Development Program, five votes, all council members. Uh homelessness and the impacts and solutions thereof, uh five votes from all council members. Uh four votes for uh the Hawthorne Mall site and and prompting and and pursuing solutions to redevelop there. Uh four votes uh on public safety and making sure that the the police department is providing uh the proper services to the community. Four votes on development of a strategic plan for the next three to five years. And then three votes each for these last four, uh a business friendly and customer service oriented city hall. Cleanliness of the city, increased homeownership and parking solutions. So my my hope is that I did tally these right and there's there's no one member of the council that feels like I I I maybe had a typo on their vote. Um but I I think that, you know, based on the feedback that I've received over the last um many months, I I think this. You know, this conforms with with that feedback and and it's been helpful for me and the staff to see how this is visualized. Um are there any questions or comments from the council uh about the the this tenet of outcome here?
I love it.
Yeah, I think uh it actually shows that we we are in line uh for the most part about what's important. And so all the things that we care about is making it on the list, you know, there's.
Yeah, well done, City Manager.
Actually, it was ver- very good idea. I'm impressed with the idea on how you approached it. And you know what? I am uh I am actually very happy, uh not not surprised, um I'm very happy the fact that we are in line. With uh these uh priorities, so.
Great.
We got some common uh goals here, so.
So after the meeting, uh to the chair, after the meeting, if you can email us this uh this result, I appreciate it, okay?
De- definitely, I mean, we'll we'll create a a formal document for the city. This is, it'll probably be included in in the actual preamble to our budget, so. Um you know, the the intent is, is that now I'll be working with our finance department and our department heads to come back with a budget in the spring that actually reflects these priorities. Yeah. Uh and not only the the dollar allocations, but also the work plans associated so that you know. You know, an item that that is a council party, wh- what is staff actually intending to do next fiscal year uh with that priority?
Now, just just leave it up there like thirty more seconds, please.
I'm sorry, um I can I can you catch me up a little bit? I I think I understand it from looking at the chart, but can you just briefly explain what what you have here?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, so um there, out of all, um well, that we had the four continuing priorities in the next fiscal year that we talked about earlier. And then of the eighteen items we asked the council to rank, ten of them are moving forward to the next fiscal year as priorities of the council. So essentially, we'll have fourteen priorities. Um and and you know, some of them, I think, are more discreet or or um short term in nature, um others much more long term in nature. Uh the idea being uh of these fourteen priorities, um you know, this is the the core, the the core of our budget is going to be centered around um addressing these parts.
It's interesting that that we had unanimous consent on three of them. Right, or four or three of them, right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
So that's outstanding, so.
Alright guys, so uh let's just go ahead and move on to the next one, to the next item, please. Housing manager Kimberly Mack has an oral report on item twenty one. Ms. Mack.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, city council members, um the city staff and guests. I come before you tonight. My name is Kimberly Mack. I'm the Housing and CDBG Programs Manager. And I am following up on a directive that was given on January twelfth. To appropriate funds from the CDBG uh CARES Act program in the amount of nine hundred and forty one thousand. We split equally between uh homeless services and small business assistance. And so tonight, I'd just like to provide a report on the federal criteria for business, for small business assistance. To obtain direction for the uh specifics of the program that should be established. Eric, are you able to pull up the PowerPoint? Thank you. You can go to the uh to the next slide. So the emergency uh business assistance uh program will offer a grant assistance to either micro uh enterprises assistance, uh micro enterprises. Micro enterprises or small business uh adversely impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. So under the federal guidelines, the EBA funds will be used to provide support to businesses by way of assisting for payroll, for rent. For uh utilities, for uh personal uh protective equipment and other costs with limitation. Are required to uh resume business and expand businesses. And so this is a list of the business interested uh in the EBA program must meet the following eligibility criteria. It must be located in the city of Hawthorne. The owner is at least eighteen years or older. They must have the uh the business owner has a D a Dunn and Bradstreet uh or Dunn's number. That uh will have been applied for at the time of application if they don't have it um now. And the business has a a SAMs or a system for award management number prior to award. And in order to get a SAMs number, you have to have a Dunn's number first. So the businesses also has to have a valid uh federal employer identification number or um FEIN number, which is also an EIN number. Which is the uh employer identification number, or if they're a sole proprietor, then they also will have to have a social security number. Next slide. So no person who is subject to the provisions of the program's conflict of interest code. Has any ownership interest in the business or would otherwise receive a financial benefit of the company. Is eligible for this assistance. At the time of application, businesses must be in good standing with the city, have a valid business license. No pending health or code enforcement matters proceeding. And no, and not delinquent in the payment of any business license fees or taxes owed to the city. The business uh must prove that it was adversely impacted because of COVID nineteen and can prove supporting document. Can provide supporting documentation illustrating this fact. And there has to be a certification that the business has neither nor will seek other grants, loans or other assistance. From any private, local, state or federal funding source for the same use identified in the program's application. So no duplication of benefits, very important. The EBA program must consist uh may consist of two uh separate components. Next slide. So the first one is micro enterprise assistance. What is a micro enterprise? It is a business that consists of five or fewer employees, including the owner. And the the business owner's family income is less than eighty percent of the area median income. Next slide. Small business assistance. In order to be eligible, the business does not qualify as a micro enterprise. And the city can determine the number of employees that defines small business between five and fifty employees. Um the business owner must commit to create and retain at least one full-time equivalent permanent job. Which must be held or made available to low or moderate income individuals. What does that mean? That means that at least one position with a salary at the low income limit. Of about sixty three thousand one hundred dollars for a single individual, according to the twenty twenty uh low income guidelines. Must be created and retained and it is to be done so by a timeframe set by the city. Now, with this component requires additional administrative fee because there is a requirement for monitoring. We have to monitor this small business to ensure that they are in compliance throughout the term that the city council sets for this limit. Additionally, business must meet the US Department of Ha- of Housing and Urban Development, underwriting standards as outlined. Next slide. Business is not eligible for assistance. A business that is located outside of the city of Hawthorne. Nonprofit entities and passive businesses. So example would be rental properties or any other business in which one does not actively participate. Government organizations and federally or state barred businesses. Next slide. So you're gonna see that this slide is a little different than the agenda bill. Uh the amount stated for the program was a fifty fifty split for the nine hundred and forty one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Agenda bill reflects an even split before administrative costs have been taken out. There's a twenty percent administrative cost used to administer both programs for homeless services and for small businesses. And so that's what this slides reflect. After the twenty percent of administrative costs, the fifty fifty split for each. Program are for homeless services and small businesses, each will receive three hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars. In estimated grant assistance. So, for instance, if the city decides to give five thousand dollars in grant, then the city can potentially assist seventy five businesses. If the city decides to give ten thousand dollars in uh grant, then the city can assist a potentially thirty seven businesses. And fifteen thousand dollars in grant, essentially twenty five businesses. The city has the full discretion to determine how much the grant will be per business. Next slide. So I come before you tonight seeking direction whether the city council would like to assist micro enterprises. Small businesses or both.
Are you seeking the direction now?
I can or I can or we can wait whichever you you prefer.
Well, I was going to uh uh give your in my input on the micro enterprises or small businesses. So um my view of the eligibility criteria for small business uh for a micro enterprises. I don't mind the idea of micro enterprises, but I would like to have businesses being. Uh the assistance given to businesses that have brick and mortar establishments as opposed to. Someone who, for example, may be working out of their homes. Um I I'm I'm looking at whether or not. What what a what what would be the purpose of our grants and and I I would like to see us give grants to businesses that are. Where businesses are likely to succeed, um wh- where we know that they are um. They actually are um, I I I don't want to use, I don't want to say serious, but but they're actually. Making sacrifices to um to 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 succeed. And someone who has to pay rent, commercial rent, someone who has to, who has an employee. Who is um, you know, who's who's got to make sure that that they 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 pay wages and that they um. And that they that they uh are are, you know, that they they know the laws of the business laws. That's someone I think that is serious about succeeding and someone we want to help. So I would add to micro enterprises that they be uh that they have a brick and mortar business. Aside from just um five or fewer total employees, I'm okay with that. And the the family income eligibility, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to see them have br- have a brick and mortar um establishment.
I threw the chair a little comment on that.
Uh was that was that it, Ma- Mayor Pro Tim, or?
Well, I have I have comments on other things too, but I was just speaking directly to that.
Okay, are you okay with the council member Ri- Patterson responding?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I totally understand, oh, Mayor Pro Tim uh has to say like, uh I want to kind of rephrase some what she was saying, she essentially wants. To bring support to businesses that have uh the greatest amount of skin in the game. Um and I would like to suggest rephrasing uh the term of uh only micro enterprises that. Have a brick and mortar to those that have at least an office, some type of office lease. Um not just necessarily a uh a retail establishment, um a retail brick and mortar, uh uh. Not quite sure what you mean by that, so I love to clarify and say it has uh some type of office lease.
Well, well, if if it's in an office, but it could be a restaurant too, in which case it would be a uh, it would still be brick and mortar.
Or commercial lease, let's say somebody that helps with a commercial lease.
Yes.
Whether it be an office or or retail.
Thank you.
Yeah, I threw the chair, uh are you finished, Kimberly?
No.
Yeah, let's uh, let's see what she could, what she's gonna tell us.
Yeah.
Okay, if you go to the next slide. So the next uh, information I am, uh, direction I'm seeking is to the sma- to define small business. If the city council chooses to go the route of assisting small businesses. I'd like to know if you wanna assist businesses that have five employees, ten employees, fifteen employees, twenty employees. Um, or any number of employees not to exceed fifty. And if you choose to do micro enterprises only, then this is not an issue for um, for this program. The next slide. So finally staff is seeking direction on the maximum dollar for the grant. Like I said before, you can offer any amount. If you wanna give one business the full amount, that is your discretion. And example, examples that were given were five thousand, ten thousand and fifteen thousand. So it's to determine um, how many uh, businesses you'd like to assist. We set that number and go forward from there. For the next steps, after we've all decided how we'd like this program to look. It is to develop the draft amendment to the twenty twenty-one action plan. Uh, we also have the option of including it with the twenty-one, twenty-two action plan that both will come at the same time around in April. Um, one of the requirements is that we, that it be published five days prior to uh, public hearing. And uh, then also next, if the city council approves the amendment. Then we go through the design phase of the program, develop guidelines and applications. Next slide. And hire staff for the program. All of this will be provided at the same time that the action plan is submitted for you to review. And go through with a fine tooth comb. Based on all of this and the work that's required to create this program, we're looking at an estimated launch date of late April. Should there be no hiccups in the, in the process. And I'll be happy to hear your comments regarding the program and direction on the three issues I brought for.
Through the chair, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
So, um. In addition to what Mayor Pro Tim had previously said, uh, in, in my, my two cents on that, I, I would. Uh, like to suggest. Um, small businesses with fifteen or less employees. Um, and us doing grants of five thousand dollars. Uh, to be able to, to, to reach the most amount of employees. But also, what, a more important comment I want to make, when it came to the criteria for a small business to receive the monies, it came up. Um, that. Certification that the business has neither received nor will seek other grants, loans. Or the assistance from any private, local, state or federal funding source for the same use as identified in the program application. I wanna make sure that the program application makes it easy for somebody to be able to identify use. Different than what the. Uh, a lot of the monies that exist are, are given for, so that somebody can be able to obtain a PPP loan. Um, the, the SVA EIDL loan and still be able to qualify for this particular um, grant as well.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, um. I, I'm kind of like uh, in between. I, I, I'm for some, I'm for micro loans. And I'm for small business and I say that because of, you know, covid and what we're currently going through. There are some businesses that are micro businesses that are um, you know, already not included in some, some loans. Um, and so I'd like to be able to include them. Uh, I don't know how many of those would uh, ultimately apply, but I think if we exclude them. Uh, you know, it's hurting them already having to work from home. Uh, during covid and some of them have had maybe, you know, um. To make, to alter, oh, make some life changes just because of uh, covid. So I'm kind of like stuck in between, but I do like council members Patterson's um. Recommendations, so I'm ki- I'm, I'm kinda split there. I. I believe it's important that we include all businesses. I don't want large businesses that ultimately can take care of their own, right? Um, we already know what those businesses are and what they look like. Um, but it is important to address the businesses today that are struggling and have suffered. Um, seven, eight months closed and still having to pay their, their licensing fees and things like this. So I know I had a discussion action item um, to address um, uh, business licenses. And I think ultimately that some of the concerns are having to, you know. Uh, pay for licensing. Um, and PPE and some other things that they have to implement to go, you know, twenty-five percent. Uh, patron use of their, either brick or mortar. Um, I'm also thinking of, you know, childcare at home. Uh, those types of centers that have childcare at their home that are currently taking four children or, cause there's a limit now, how, how many could be taken. But um, it's a struggle, it's a struggle across the board and I don't wanna take away from small micro businesses as well.
The chair.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I will agree, uh, you know, maybe we should do both, right? Put it out there and see. Uh, you know, how many applicant, applicant we're going to receive. And I do agree to do, you know, fifteen or less employees, so it could be like a real small business. Um, the other thing, uh, Kimberly, that to, to, to look into. Let's say, for example, it's a business had paid their uh, city license in twenty. Uh, twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, but they were not able to pay in twenty twenty, like they didn't renew on December thirty-first, right? Uh, maybe if they showed that they have that license in. Uh, from twenty nineteen, twenty. But if we, if they got this loan, they will pay for the, for the new license, maybe we should still consider them. You follow me?
Yeah, may I speak to that for one second?
Yes, please.
So, it's the city's discretion whether to assist a business that is delinquent in any business license or taxes regarding this program. However, the funding for this program may not be used to pay for business license and taxes.
So that's the.
That's a HUD regulation.
Yeah, okay, I knew there was a caveat in there, right? So, that's the HUD, but, but I do agree because, you know, uh, yeah, there is a, a lot of small business that. Uh, you know, like we say, mi- micro enterprise that sometimes they not be able to apply for the S, SBA loan or the PTVs. So we should maybe give them a hand. So that's what I'm saying, maybe both of them. And let's see, uh, you know, how much application we're going to receive and to make it, you know, like uh. Mister David Patterson said, less than fifteen employees, so, so there'll be actually small business. That have, you know, cause I was going to say uh, ten and less, but he came out with the fifteen, so I said, okay, it's okay. Uh, and, and also to make sure that if they got this grant, uh, that at least. They will be in business at least for twelve months and beyond, right? Like, yeah, if we can put a timeline that. They can, they will not get this money and then shut down in three months or six months. That maybe they should be open at least, for at least for a, a year if they got this loan. You know, that, because we don't wanna give this, but somebody this loan that is gonna pay. Their, let's say, their rent, their lease that they're behind for three months or four months and then they, they don't open. And then they, they don't have that one job, one employee that we want to, to make sure that they still have a full-time job, right? So we have to make sure, how, how can we put that in there? I saw David Patterson shaking his head, so go ahead.
No, well, I mean, you look at like, uh, uh, the IRS doesn't require you to be a good business person. So, I mean, you, you have the right to be, uh, to try your best and fail. So I, I think there should be some good, good faith, uh, efforts to keeping your business open. And serve, you know, serve your clients, but, uh, serve the consumers, but, you know, we can't require the business.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is because you could, you could have some people out there. That can get this money to pay their, their, their leases that is in here and then don't open the business. So, so we have to figure it out because we want this business to, to, to stay open, to reopen and to be success. So, so that's what Ms. Valentine was talking about, this business should be success in the, in the near future, in the future. Uh, so, but if we don't have some type of language in there that prevent them to see this as opportunity to pay and run.
You, you wanna prevent people from paying back rent and just never opening up?
Exactly.
Should the language also include uh. Anything relating to a pandemic, say we have another surge and yeah, they pay and they bring it current, but now they're forced due to state regulations to shut their business down.
Yeah, if there is another pandemic, then it's understandable. If the state declared another emergency that they have to shut down, cause we never know, there is a new string.
And then we get more money, we get more money.
I have to say, oh my God, no.
And is the consequence for uh, violating that timeframe repayment of the grant?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, but the program have, you, you have presented to us is very good and I know we have to follow the HUD guidelines, so. Uh, but at least, you know, uh. We are trying to help people out there that is struggling that we want, like Ms. Valentine said, we want them to succeed. We want them to come back. After this covid and continue to do business in Hawthorne. Uh, and maybe in the future, maybe we'll have more, you know, help them to get more money.
Uh, I would like to see um, see us give, uh, have a limit as to, I, I wanna see us be able to use the money. Um, to the, to, to the largest extent possible. Uh, and benefit as many businesses as possible, so I want to see, but I also want to see us not give. Such a little amount, such a small amount that it really won't benefit them, so. I'm, I'm kind of torn about how much to give them, but I'm thinking about five thousand dollar. As an upper limit for the micro businesses and ten thousand dollars as an upper limit for the. Small businesses and that way we could benefit a lot of businesses, fifteen thousand. Would mean we would, we wouldn't be able to benefit as many businesses, so I think I'd like to see five thousand grants to the micro businesses. And ten thousand to the um, to the small businesses. Um.
Row, Mayor Pro Tim, do you want to specify exactly how many small business grants and exactly how many micro business grants?
We'd have to know, we have to.
First served until the money.
Well, I think we'd have to, we probably have to have some idea of how many we can service. You know, maybe we need, we need to get um. A schedule in advance on that, how many, how many businesses, how many uh, micro businesses we could service with five thousand dollar grants? And how many small businesses we could service with ten thousand dollar grants and uh, put that all together and see how many we could service altogether.
Yeah, uh, uh, we can, we can also set, you know, uh, first come, first served or, or go to, if we got a lot, it goes to a lottery. But I agree with, with Ms. Valentine, you know, like maybe micro enterprise five thousand and the small business ten thousand. But, but so, and then we will have to figure out, do we wanna say uh, first come, first served or if we receive a lot, they have to go to a lottery.
Yeah, to the chair.
Yes.
I think it's important, uh, just like we've been using, uh, you know, the rental assistance program. Uh, until it's exhausted, uh, first come, first serve. Um, you know, and that's another animal in its own, cause I know, I still know there, there's people in needs and just need handholding to be helped with that application. Uh, but for the, for the business, I, I also um, would agree with making it uh. Until exhausted and first come, first serve.
I think it's a good idea, council member.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also would like to see it, uh, see us revisit this in six months after it's implemented as opposed to just letting it go. Uh, let's say we, we implemented in April, late April, as you say, then we come back. And six months from that date and see exactly how it's working, so that we'll know whether uh, you know. We, we'll know who's applying, um, whether we're getting, if we're getting a lot of applications from. Um. A micro businesses, but very few from small businesses, this, this is something we might, might want to adjust. But I think that um. I think it should be, I think we should limit it in time so that we can take another look at it and see whether it's working, so it, it would be like a pilot program.
To the chair.
Yes.
Um, I think what we're doing tonight is giving discretion to Mrs. Mack, who's gonna be overseeing the program and I don't think there's any. You know, give it and then come back. To happen. I think what we provide as far as instruction goes, a, a pilot project, I don't think it's gonna work. Um, because we've got the money now and it's to be used now. And those businesses need to apply as quickly as it's posted and out to the community. There's no time in, in my opinion for a pilot program and it would be, I think, detrimental to say. Let's see how many apply first to micro and then to brick and mortar business. Um, I don't thi- I don't, I don't see the fairness there. I don't. It's gonna, it's gonna have to be just, you know, both. At the amounts that was just mentioned, agreed upon, if there's a consensus. Um, first come, first serve until exhausted.
I think, I think we should have regular reports on how it's going.
Oh yeah, regular report, most definitely, most definitely, but.
Make adjustments along way if we choose to.
Yeah.
Regular reports, we, we're informed.
My, my thing is just, you know, putting out information and then taking it back and changing it up and people not being aware of it. I don't want us to be in a predicament that we changed somebody, you know,'s predicament and they weren't made aware of it. So when we put information out there, it has to be real-time information, it has to be valid information that's posted on the website, instructions followed. And the council's not taking it back and saying, oh, we're gonna decide to make this a micro program or, oh, guess what, we decided since we only received micro business, we're not gonna do brick and mortar. Or vice versa. That's my concern. That's, that's the, you know, that's where the housing department, Mrs. Mack is asking for instructions and I don't really wanna. You know, make her go back and forth with all of this because she's doing the housing assistance and then there's gonna be the homeless with another department, but it's just a lot. It's a lot of process.
To the chair, yeah, I, I agree. Just go ahead and, and, you know, create a program based on our recommendation. And like, like we did with the rental assistant, it did, you know, we thought we were gonna get a lot of app, app, applicant, but we didn't. And then we didn't go to lottery and then we just, we changed it, right? So it's the same thing.
Right, so we.
Put something out there.
Kim, uh, Ms. Mack, you have instruction then, okay? Just let us know, uh, give us a report as to how you're doing. Okay, summarize your uh, plan if you could please, as soon as possible. Thank you. Planning Director Greg Su- Sutiuchi has a oral report on item twenty-two.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, thank you, Kimberly. Uh, Mary to the chair real quick.
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
Um, we never voted on item nineteen.
Oh, um, just a moment, just a moment, yeah. Well, I didn't even hear any response from Greg. Greg, are you there? Greg?
So, uh, uh, Greg had a family emergency.
Okay.
Um, and uh, our Assistant City Attorney Melissa Crossway, um, no, I'm sorry. Um, Art Bishmakian uh, is, is on the line and.
Never heard from him either, alright. Alright, okay.
Good evening.
Uh, okay, alright, Mr. Bishmakian, yeah, we're gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion on item number nine, uh, item twenty.
Second. No nineteen, right? Nineteen.
Uh, if, if it's, it says item twenty.
Yes, yes.
And I think that this, this motion is to, to accept the results of the, uh, the priorities exercise that the council engaged in.
I'll vote please.
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Law reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. Okay, Mr. Bishmakian, please.
What about twenty? Do we need to roll on that?
Yes.
But there was, uh, we just gave instructions. Does that require a vote, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, it does, I think.
Okay. I make the, does it require a vote?
Yes, why don't you vote on it?
Alright, Mr. Uh, I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, the second is for, uh, Ms. English, Councilwoman. Um, roll call vote please. Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The law reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. Thank you, Council, uh, Mr. Bishmakian, go ahead now.
Yes, thank um, uh, Mayor Vargas and council members. At the February ninth council meeting, um, council requested that staff provide a draft uh, copy of requests. For proposal to seek services of a cannabis consultant in order to review. Um, comment and provide further direction to staff prior to sending out the RFP. The RFP has been provided to, to council members. The RFP has been provided to, to council members, and it's a broad, uh, RFP because we're looking for expertise in the field to provide us, um, the full array of, uh, uh, issues to be discussed. Um, at this point, um, if there are any specific, um, questions or suggestions or comments on the draft RFP, we would take your comments and make any revisions or any, any updates and eventually, uh, send that out, uh, to, um, the consultants out there. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How much are you going to be looking to, uh, to pay this consultant?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
So, uh, this exceeds, uh, the city manager's authority of twenty-five thousand dollars, it's anticipated to, and, and therefore, we, that's why we are going out uh, to RFP, and so, um, price will certainly be one of the factors we're using to, um, uh, evaluate the proposals that we do receive.
Do you have an idea of, of what you, what kind of range you'd be, you'd be, uh, you'd be receiving?
And, and so I, I would think it'd probably somewhere between twenty-five and a hundred thousand dollars, um, but, um, uh, uh, Art might, you know, have a, a more fine number in his mind.
Yeah, I, and I think the price is gonna be in part what we want and how much do we want, there might be, uh, once we receive the proposals, I think we'll have a better idea and be able to discern, uh, key, um, programs that the consultant needs to do, there are other aspects that staff could do. So that'll help us to be able to fine tune and come up with something that is, uh, a reasonable price range for something that the city's looking for, so, but a hundred thousand dollars, um, yeah, I would say that is a reasonable number to expect.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Uh, I, I think, um, a- another aspect of this is, um, we, we're gonna have to construct fees for this regulatory program, and there's a potential that any cost we incur to establish a program can be rolled into those fees too, so, um, i- i- in theory, if, if we construct the program correctly, um, there, there's, uh, the city's not just coming out of, uh, reserves for this unanticipated expenditure.
Um, to the chair.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I apologize in advance, um, for enunciating your last name, Mr. Art Bashmanken. Um, you made a, you made a, you made a comment with regards to, um, and I don't know, maybe it was just a misstep, uh, regarding issues, issues that we would want to to bring or resolve through this RFP, I didn't get the, I didn't get the, what you were trying to.
Maybe I was just making a point, a comment that the RFP, uh, as requested by council is before you, so if you have any, any comments or concerns, you could articulate that to staff, so we could go back and make any adjustments that you think is appropriate.
Uh, yeah, for the most part, I think this, the, that the, um, RFP should include, uh, you know, social equity component to it. It should include licensing of all types, it should also be, uh, you know, uh, something that we're limiting to perhaps the population of the community of Hawthorne. Uh, we all know that the city's a small city, not very large, and so that's very important. Um, I think also the community involvement component's important, and there needs to be a community benefit, which is, um, showing, um, businesses that ultimately provide, uh, you know, uh, whether it be retail delivery, cultivation, manufacturing, or distribution, lab testing, or a micro business that ultimately they commit to, at least, uh, in my opinion, a benefit of uh, maybe three hundred thousand a year that could be given back to the community and to schools and to those that, uh, could benefit from those dollars, and this would be an annual, uh, community benefit back to the people, the businesses and those alike here in the city of Hawthorne. It also has to speak to, um, you know, something that we'll have to look at later on, once the RFP comes back to us, that we wanna be able to review, along with whoever is selected, to assure that, uh, ongoing discussion is taking place and new information is being provided and, and or old, or not. But we wanna be able to entertain, um, fully the RFP to, you know, conclusion to assure that we're not leaving anything out. Um, I also know that, um, you know, the financial component of it, there's, there's just so much, there's so much, and then also, uh, you know, uh, a safety factor, um, which is, you know, the businesses itself having, um, a security plan. Um, there's just a number of things that come up that, uh, I just, you know, on the top of my head and familiar with, um, other, um, cities that have implemented cannabis in their communities. Um, although this is new to us, I, I know that, um, there's some businesses that, or I should say, some cities that uh, went into this blindly and, and then ended up being, you know, sued and, and these types of things, and that's something I'm trying to avoid. So I wanna make sure that what we do is done, um, transparently, I wanna make sure that it's due fully and, um, before the eyes of the people, the people that ultimately voted in support of, of, uh, a five percent tax to these types of businesses, and then, um, I just want to be able to, um, work collectively with the, the council as a whole and to our city departments with, um, anything that they might, you know, find of concern or, or, um, whatnot, but just be involved fully, fully from the time the the RFP goes out to exactly what we want the RFP to look like and include is very important. And we just need to make sure that it's a, it's a diverse, uh, organization ultimately that's selected, that speaks to the people of color and opportunities for those of color. And, um, just, yeah, just, just want the, the full involvement and some of the things that I pointed out earlier. I know I'm missing some things, I, I wrote some notes, uh, they'll eventually come up again, um, because I'm sure this is not gonna be the first time we're gonna be discussing, uh, where we're at with the cannabis RFP.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes.
Okay, um, Ms., uh, I understand what the Ms. English is trying to, is trying to, to say, uh, but these RFP actually is to go out and the people that's going to reply to the RFP is the one who's going to tell us that they have expertise of putting, uh, cannabis programs that's going to create all those, uh, programs that Ms. English have mentioned, social equity, uh, licensing, what type of licensing, uh, uh, give us the expertise about, about application fees on zoning, on sequer. Uh, so, these RFPs not the list, the things that we're going to potentially create. But these RFPs to bring that consultant that have those expertise in all those areas, from social equity, from, uh, community program, the sequer, to land use, to zoning, to, um.
And that's why it's important, that's why it's important.
But they, eh, they should not be listing on these RFP, so these, that's what the mention, the word is cannabis experience people out there, consultants, that they have done the, the work, they have established cannabuses in different cities, that they're the one who's going to show us that they know how to do it, so then it'll be our responsibility to say, well, this applicant does not, didn't say nothing about social equity, didn't say nothing about uh, community involvement, didn't say nothing about licensing, so they disqualify.
No, no, I understand, but that's.
So you try to put the, you try to put the, the cherry in front of the horse, that it doesn't have, this RFP is to be a broad RFP. So then when it goes out, those people that have the experience is going to apply and reply to us, and they go, they're gonna show, because I'm going to evaluate them based on the experience, that they have done all these items that you have mentioned.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, so this, these RFP is, is have to be a broad RFP. So, because if you're starting, so you, basically, you are giving them, uh, per se, your, your goals in advance, but the, the goals is going to be and how we're going to put that program in place with all those things that you have mentioned, that is so beautiful, that we need on our Hawthorne cannabis program. So these RFP is a broad base, and I will say, you know, just release it the way it is, because it's, 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 it's well constructed, you have some, some, uh, 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 you know, what we, we want, but these people that's going to reply, that's where we're going to evaluate them basis on our understanding, they understand the cannabis program basis on all those items you have mentioned.
Yeah, well, you'd be surprised.
Okay, no, but I'm telling you, that's the way it is. My only concern, Art, is that I, I want this RFP actually to go out by March twelve, because you gotta have some extra, extra access like that, right? Uh, uh, and, and maybe, uh, uh, do we wanna give them until April, or should we just give them, uh, until March thirty-first?
Yeah, I think giving a consultant's maybe at least three weeks.
Yeah.
To.
Okay, so.
It's reasonable.
Yeah, maybe then we can say, um, hmm, give them until April nine. So it'll be almost a month.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
The, 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 the due date, okay, and then, uh, those other dates, it doesn't matter, because then when you guys review, because like I, like, I, I ask, uh, Eric, that was city manager there, uh, all the applicants, we have, I want to bring all the applicants to, to a special meeting.
Right.
For us to review it, all of us together, uh, uh, public.
This was the interview that I requested, yeah.
Yeah, so we would have to review all of them and then come up with a selection, how we're going, who we, who have the expertise based on our expectations.
Okay, so what I'm hearing that, uh, there will be an interview opportunity with the council.
Yes.
Alright guys.
But I don't want just the staff to go make a recommendation to us, now I wanna see all, if it's twelve applicant, I wanna see all of them. And I wanna be transparent, we're gonna be, yeah, as a public, like a special meeting.
I agree.
Alright guys, so, um, pretty straightforward, there's instruction, there's, uh, more focus. So thank you, uh, Art. For your participation, I make a motion.
I second.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Through the chair.
Yes ma'am.
I wonder if we could go back to number twenty-one, I wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, let, let's make it real quick, because we got a long.
Okay, I had make, I had made a recommendation that the micro enterprise business, uh, that one of the requirements should be that they, they have a brick and mortar facility. I don't know if we reached a consensus on that.
I don't think we did, we only said that we wanna give both of them, uh, micro enterprise and small business.
But I think both should have brick and mortar facilities.
Uh, but what, uh, but.
I'm gonna find that.
But, but are you, are you trying to exclude the home, uh, homes?
Yes, I, I'm trying to exclude those businesses which are not.
But what about childcare, somebody might have childcare in their homes, or might just doing catering out of their homes.
To the chair, mayor.
I don't, yeah, that may be true, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure.
There was already a vote.
Right, but I'm not sure that we clarified it.
No, it's gonna come back to us any, anyway, Ms. Valentine, so when the program is designed, it's gonna come back to us for us to, to have a final discussion on it.
And, yeah.
It's not a final thing, correct, Eric?
We'll have an opportunity to talk about it when it comes back, and then we could do something through inter delineation. So we can interline something, if that's the case. And that's a good point, but it's debatable, I feel it's a debatable. It is debatable, because there are people that operate out, out of their homes, there's a lot of people, um,
That all may be true, but I think we're trying to give business loans or business grants to businesses that are going to be successful and not eh, the, the, it, it shouldn't be a public assistance grant, in other words, it should be a business grant.
See, this is opening up a, 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 a harder, uh, discussion here, but, um.
This is not a real business, because they operate out of their home.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna come back to us, so the, the discussion, because we already gave a directive to them.
How about, how about everybody, when it comes back, you just, everybody thinks about this concept, and then we'll have like, we'll have a good discussion when it comes back.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand maybe what the, uh, Mayor Protem's point is, but, uh, I have many examples of, uh, of businesses that are not able to operate out of a brick and mortar, and we shouldn't penalize them because they're suffering from the COVID.
I agree, that's a good comment.
Because I, I would agree if they really are businesses. I mean, but just because someone says they have a business in their home, doesn't mean they actually do.
Other home doesn't mean you're not a business either.
Hold on, Ms. Valentine, you have to have a licensing, if you have a license, you don't have to, and if they show that they've been doing business, ass, that they might have a, a DBA, or then, then you just need to get the D N N and all those.
They still have to prove that they've been negatively impacted.
Like they should have.
They have to show they've been doing business.
How about, how about we just do this, we, we ask Kimber, uh, Ms. Mack and the city attorney to, to just determine, give us some ideas on how we can verify their business status. And that's it, and once we, they give us that, we can think about a little bit more.
Right, because that was not done in the, uh, in the original, uh, the original, uh, statement.
Absolutely, I think people, we should, we, we need to qualify to see who's really a business. Because, you know, people, there's people that exploit these programs sometimes, and we wanna make sure that those people don't get filtered out.
I mean, by virtue of that they have to show that they were negatively impacted, they have to show that they had business revenue and they actually were, were.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to the next item, we, we, we don't wanna digress, but, uh, Ms. Mack, if you could go ahead and just work with the city attorney and just give us some uh, methods on how to verify the business status of these people. Okay, um, where are we at? We're on them, item number twenty-three. City manager, Eric Lee, so this item, uh, is one that I asked our city manager to present on the general fund revenue sources, only for clarification, because there was a little bit of a um, question, there were some questions that arose when we had a previous presentation. And, uh, it's very important that the community understands, you know, and, and, and staff and even ourselves, that we take a look, another look at where is the money coming from. Mister, uh, Mister City Manager, can you just add, add to that, what I just said?
Yeah, so.
Conversation?
Yes, your point is very well taken, um, and so, you know, what staff has done is taken a, uh, the last full fiscal year we've had, um, before the pandemic started, which was fiscal year eighteen nineteen, which ended in, on June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, uh, and, and broken down all the general fund revenues that we received. Um, and so these are the unrestricted revenues that the council has full discretion on how those are used. Um, and so essentially, we've got six major sources, we've got, uh, two sales tax streams, which totaled about twenty-eight million dollars. Two property tracks, tax streams that totaled about eighteen million, uh, our utility users' tax at six million, business license tax, um, at almost the same amount, at six million. Our transient lodging tax, our transient occupancy tax are often referred, referred to as our hotel tax, which is just under six million. And then all of the revenues, um, combined, which include all the cost recovery sources that we have and other smaller taxes, um, that were less than five million dollars, uh, each, um, bundled up, uh, with another eighteen million for a total of almost eighty-three million dollars in that last full fiscal year prior to the pandemic. And so, um, we're having a hard time with this slide here. Um, the agenda bill, I, I think actually articulates it a little more cleanly. Um, the, the, the blue spheres here are sales tax, these yellow shades are, are property tax. And so, you know, essentially, while we do have, um, a lot of balance in our revenues, um, you know, over half our revenues are, are dependent on sales and property tax, are, uh, utility users' tax would be here in red, for about that six million dollars. Um, our, uh, transient occupancy tax was about six million dollars here in green, and these, all, all of the revenues were seventeen million dollars. Um, and that, that seventeen million dollars, as I mentioned, um, included revenue streams that were less than five million dollars each, and so I've broken them down here on this table, just so you have an understanding, um, licenses and permits um, were three million dollars, fines and forfeitures, um, these are essentially penalties that we assess, more than three million dollars. Uh, we, we do assess, uh, a franchise fee for our refuse hauler, um, there are service charges that, that we recover. Um, other franchises, we've got, um, investment revenue, um, property transfer taxes are, you know, very small. Um, all those add up to eighteen million dollars, and so that's essentially how our, uh, on, in a regular year, this is what I would refer to, is probably like our, our um, last base, um, prior to the pandemic, uh, which we're eagerly. Um prior to the pandemic, uh which we're eagerly looking to recover towards and beyond. And so uh I I'm certainly available for any questions you may have, um and as the mayor mentioned, this was just a um information item only. And we're recommending the council receive and file this report.
Out through the chair. Mayor, you're muted by the way. Mister City Manager, I think it's spectacular, I would personally like to get some more detail about the um. What makes up the sales tax, like what are the industries that are major contributors to that sales tax number?
Very good idea, so you're, um can I ask you a question? Are you uh suggesting maybe its own little pie chart on the sales tax broken down?
Yes, sir.
That sounds good. That's actually a good one. Do we have enough information, Mister City Manager, to do that, to try to see what sector the the sales tax is coming from?
Yes, we we have a lot of data, some of it is uh not releaseable to the public, but um there should be enough that is that we can um paint that picture that Councilmember Patterson is looking for.
And when it comes to property tax, you know, I I was given the impression that um. Or I had asked previously a question about our, was it real property tax versus uh other property tax?
I think, I think the question at a prior meeting uh was secured property taxes versus unsecured. Is that right?
Correct, correct, right.
We we could do a a a deeper dive on property taxes and the differentiation between the the two sides. Any other questions?
Mister Mayor, you're still muted.
Are we good? Okay, good, so um. This was really good actually, and um I think this will help clarify a lot of stuff and then we could just. Speak a little bit more, you know, with uh. More information, like more knowledge uh in our pockets. Okay, so uh so let's see what the next item is, thank you. Okay, I make the motion to accept it. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mister City Manager, your items for approval?
Yes, uh thank you, Mister Mayor, I've got items twenty five through thirty on my consent calendar for your approval.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to, I have some actually, so let me see. I wanted to pull. I wanted to pull. Oh my gosh. Eric, you had, you had through, you said through twenty nine?
Twenty five through thirty.
Oh, twenty five through thirty.
So what is it that you would like to do?
No, I think we had already discussed that, the only thing I I did ask was uh item number twenty six that we have a report that somebody um. Remember, we discussed that being back um.
So are we good? I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, second. No, because we had a discussion about it earlier and um I wanted the. That new um medical services to provide us a report to council.
Did we get it? Did we, did you get it?
That's why I was, I was asking Eric to.
So we're gonna agendize that for um a a future meeting, hopefully the next one or two meetings to bring back an update on our um medical director program in the police department.
Very good, okay, so I second that motion. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Uh you're muted, okay. Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Alright folks, so um we have several, several, I don't even know how the heck this got on here, but. Items to discuss, I mean, you guys are crazy. But it, but uh we're gonna get un-crazy right now and I'm just gonna, I'm just simply gonna ask like what everybody wants to do is just, we gonna get through these? If we can combine some of these. Um I know that uh and if we could just kind of uh just be as efficient as possible, just so we could get to the closed session. Unless you guys wanna be here a little bit later, that's okay, I could do that too. But um. These are all very, very valid uh discussion items and I'm very impressed.
Don't worry, Mister Mayor, it will be quick.
No, no, just, we just wanna make.
Let's go to Ms. Valentine, so you you just.
Okay, so let's uh, Ms. Valentine, you have. You have like. Six or seven of these. Would you like to combine them or?
I I I could, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, um they're pretty, they're pretty straightforward. But um there there's probably going to wanna be some discussion on it. For, do you want me to just go ahead? I think not, eh, okay. I think, I think thirty five and thirty six can be combined.
Okay, so why don't you just go, why don't you just go through each one? Request, se- start off with S B nine and tell us and then we'll just move, you can make the motion and then we go.
Well, let me just ask this first. Um is. Is the planning director around, I think perhaps he might have wanted to. Give a, to to talk about this a little bit, if not, I'll talk about it. Is the planning director here?
He had an emergency.
Not available, but our our assistant city attorney Melissa Crossway is is available and can speak to these if you'd like.
Okay, so um I, so discussion action bills. S B nine and S B ten, I'm asking that the council oppose them, um so um. The city attorney Crossway, can you please uh just briefly explain?
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Good evening, mayor, city council, I'm sure I'd be happy to. So um Senate Bill nine and also Senate Bill ten are are part of a comprehensive package that the. State has tried to put forward to deal with housing, so nine um is a what's called the lot split bill. So essentially what it's doing is um, it's a bill that would require streamlining approval of. Um two units on one lot, um you'd be able to have not necessarily a duplex, but. Two units on a single lot that zones for single family use. Um you could also do a lot split, so you could take a a parcel that is uh designated a single family. And split that into two, um essentially creating two parcels within the single family residential zone. Um and these would be done without, um they would be done ministerially, they would be done without discretionary review or hearings by the city. No C Q required. Um and this again is to uh encourage additional housing um to deal with the state's housing crisis. That's S B nine in a nutshell, essentially.
Describe the next one.
Okay, S B ten. Again, we're trying to have more housing encouraged, so this one I I call it the um easy upzone bill, so as you're familiar. Um when you downzone property, you are um basically um saying that a parcel. Um the units that you have on the parcel, you will be allowing less units. This does the opposite, it allows you to upzone your property, um it would allow a city to pass an ordinance to zone a parcel for up to ten units. At whatever height is appropriate in certain areas um that are that are designated as either transit, transit rich areas. Jobs rich areas or urban infill, infill areas and all of those are defined by the statute. Um again, it would be uh a ministerial approval. The law would provide that this isn't considered a project and it'd be exempt from C Q and again, it would allow you to. Basically uh make a parcel have up to ten units. Um on that particular parcel, you're upzoning, you're increasing the density of that particular parcel.
So, so basically.
That's essentially what this bill would do.
So um uh Ms. Crossway, so but essentially this takes away local control, so we lose control of what we could uh put. What regulations we could put, is that correct?
Right, right, it would be ministerial, so there would be no discretion, it would be something that we would be required to do, we would not have as much discretion.
And and when I say local control, I just say simply um that some of these ideas might be good, but they might not be appropriate for Hawthorne. Um so we don't know that yet unless we take a deep dive and we get a consultant and we do all this other stuff to be able to figure out if that works for us. So that's just my concern, I I I just barely heard about it, anybody else?
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh uh thank you, Melissa, uh for the, for stepping for crack because I the one who actually wanted to crack to give us the pro and con. So the public of Hawthorne, if they listen, is for them to understand that we not against, you know, housing. By the same time, we do not want to lose control of our uh zoning, you know, residential zoning. And because what the state is trying to do is to take control of how to regulate our own. Residential, commercial and uh you know, and industrial area, so. So we cannot lose control because when we start losing control, uh and then the state can dictate whatever they wanna do. And then we got, we'll have the ball but it's coming to us to say, well, the state said we can do this, so you can, you don't have no power over us. So we cannot, we cannot do that, so I do support uh to send a letter to oppose to the the two bills, so.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll make the second or should I give it to?
I make a motion that, I'm I'm sorry, I make a motion that we oppose uh S B nine, yeah.
Okay, it's been seconded, roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next item, please.
Okay, this is S B, um this is, I am, uh this is, this is rather straightforward. You know, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we um support S B fifty four. This would require the reduction of a seventy five percent statewide reduction. Of a way, of the waste generated from single-use packaging made from plastic. Um the reduction would occur from source reduction, recycling or compost uh composting. And that's the bill in a nutshell, so it's just basically uh. Uh reducing, try, attempting to to reduce waste generated from plastic use, uh the use of plastics.
I second.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I'm sorry, but um does this mean that we need to notify businesses uh that are using. A disposable packaging more, moreover, you know, food packaging? But we would if it passes.
It passes, yes.
Uh you're saying support, so Senate Bill fifty four hasn't passed yet? So you, all you're doing is a letter of support in support of, okay. Correct, yeah, no, none of, none of these bills have passed. Okay, alright.
Roll call vote please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English?
Second, who made that second?
I did.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next item, please.
Yes, the next, the next group are all on broadband. Um S uh so I'm recommending support A B fourteen. And uh I'm say A B thirty four and A B fourteen, A B thirty four is the Broadband for All Act. Um this would become operative only if it's approved by the voters at the November eighth twenty two election. To authorize the issuance of state obligation bonds. To fund increased access to broadband services to rurals, ur- uh urban, suburban, tribal and underserved commit uh communities. So this is the Broadband for All Act. I'm recommending support for that, the the support A B fourteen is along the same lines. This is the California Advanced Services Fund, Fund, I'm sorry. The California Advanced Services Fund current law establishes the State Department of Education. Invested with specified powers and duties relating to the state's public school system. This bill would authorize local educational agencies. To report to the department their pupils' estimated needs for computing services and internet connectivity adequate for at-home learning. The bill would require the department in consultation with the P U C to compile that information. And to annually post that compiled information on the department's internet website. So what they're trying to do here is to determine. The the needs of students for internet services. And get and gather that information. Um so that they could in the future uh support legislation, I presume, that would, that would fund. Um a fur- further uh development of internet in in the, in the areas that need it. So that's, it's along the same line as the Broadband for All Act, it's just a different bill. But since, since we are, since we are supporting broadband, I think we should support both of these.
Do you have a motion? Roll call vote please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next item, please, request to support coronavirus?
Yeah, the last one is the uh request to support late and st- local re- recovery funds. We've been advised by Cal Cities that we can expect thirty million dollars and this is basically. To get the council, council's approval to accept the funds, I don't know if this is something that is. Um an urgent matter to do tonight, but if it is, I'd like to be able to um. To have, to give Eric the authority to accept the funds if 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 we need to accept it before the next council meeting.
Uh through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
But this, this is not only if the, if the Congress passed that bill, right?
Correct.
Through the chair? The, so just, just to be clear, uh we have been targeted for thirty billion dollars a- a- out of that bill. Uh but it's still in committee and we're very hopeful, um our our state and national partners are are lobbying hard for it to be uh passed into law. Eventually, if it is, we will definitely be coming back with a a separate action item, probably a hundred action items for the council to consider. Um as we would accept that magnitude of funds.
Yeah, we'll give you about the one hundred hands to sign that, okay?
Okay.
So I think um uh Mayor Pro Tem is just, wants to bring this to the council's attention. We're already on record with um uh the federal government that were in support of this. Um and and Cal Cities is really just urging engagement at the, at the local level by all elected officials.
So are we in concurrence? Do we need a vote on this?
I I think a formal vote would be good and and we can send another letter as this, as this moves through committees in Congress.
Well, uh Mayor Pro Tem, can you make the motion?
I'm, I move that we support agenda item forty.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Pro Tem Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
And with respect of all, to all of these items which we've approved, um I'd like to uh to ask the city manager to. Uh to notify our state representative, uh Assemblywoman Burke, our state senator, Senator Bradford. The governor, um and the the League of California Cities and the South Bay C O G. To notify them that we are in support of all of these items.
Thank you. Next item is some item forty one.
Mister Mayor, through the chair.
Oh, you have a comment, sorry.
Yeah, uh I believe uh Ms. Valentine, before we do that, Russell have to bring those letters to the, to the, to the city council, right, Russell?
No, I can actually just uh prepare the letter and have it uh go out uh with uh city manager's signature. Indicating that it was approved by the entire city council.
Alright, okay.
I think uh there was, there were some previous letters, I think, that went out similar to that. For some other uh coronavirus help or something. Next item? Montero? Councilmember Montero?
Alright, uh thank you, Mister Mayor, the reason that uh I put this item for discussion actually. Uh because I don't, uh I just want everybody to know. That as as of uh this uh January first twenty twenty. A new law went to effect on campaign contribution. Okay, so the state have imposed a campaign contribution limit. Per contributor or per individual that is forty nine hundred dollar for local municipal election. So you cannot receive no more than forty nine hundred dollar from an individual. Okay, uh now the reason that I brought these up. The state give a leeway that each city could submit a letter. To F C C P. Decline that that limit and create their own limit. Okay, so some cities around us have created some limits. Of course, you know, more than forty nine and we know some a few have less than forty nine hundred. So I'm not looking into change the state law. I I can say, I concur that we can stay with them, forty nine hundred dollar per contribution. Or if we wanna give Russell a di- a directive. Or if we wanna give Russell a di- a directive to send a letter to say how much we want to be. Our campaign term limit for the city of Hawthorne.
So, Mr. uh, Mr. Montero, council member, so you want us to think about this and maybe discuss it at a future meeting?
Well, I don't know if there is too much leeway time, or if we have passed the deadline, so I don't know about that.
Mr. City Attorney, is there still an opportunity to discuss this and change the limit?
Uh, yes, you still have the opportunity to increase that limit, and you would direct me to prepare an ordinance to that effect.
Okay, alright, so I'm. Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, I would like to, to direct the city attorney to uh, to, to draft an ordinance, incre- increasing the amount.
But um, council, but council, uh, Mayor Protem, maybe everybody should just think about this and reflect on it, because uh. I mean, we know there are some players around town that can dump tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars, so. You know, but then there's people here on council that have enjoyed also, I mean, in the future and near recently. Um, donations that have been, you know, appropriate. And uh, the forty-nine hundred limit might affect some of the council members. Uh, and uh, people who might be running in the future, so. So, what, what, what do you say? Do you think we should take some time to think about what would be appropriate, or what?
Yeah, there's plenty of time, so I can actually just uh, put it on the agenda again in the near future. And this, this way you'll have an opportunity to think about uh, the exact limit that you want to direct me to. Be the limit for uh, city, city uh, elections.
Yeah, that's fine. So I just, I just want us to maybe be able to discuss if we want. Nine hundred, if we wanted to increase, if we wanna decrease, is the pleasure of the council.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So you're making us, you're making us aware.
So, so now Ms. Valentine have gave direction to Russell to bring some type of uh. Uh, discussion, uh, because she, he, he cannot create an ordinance, he doubt us discuss.
Other, other cities have like Inglewood has a hundred thousand, some other cities have fifty thousand, others have twenty-five hundred.
Could you bring us back uh, something, know what other, other cities have done and. We use as a basis of a conversation if we wanna make any changes.
Okay, ac- actually, um, that's probably the most appropriate thing to do, to see what other people have done, so. We can see what's forbidden and what's like, has, has actually passed, right?
Well, it's not just, uh, it's not, well, it's not just passed, because each city has to determine the limit, like, like Russell said. For example, Inglewood have got is one hundred thousand, cath- uh, uh, cathedral series, twenty-five hundred. Some other cities, you know, like twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, etc.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Russell, just bring it for discussion, then we'll discuss. Thank you.
Thank you for making us aware. Um, risk, the next item, uh, Mr. Patterson? Councilmember Patterson?
Yes, go ahead. Uh, having some conversations with some counterparts in other cities, uh, it came up, they were quite surprised that, that uh, our. Um, employees, employee groups can get involved in our elections. I wanna kind of discuss that a- and. Um, ideally see that being restricted. From let's say, and not that we've had a lot of this happen, but having let's say, uh, the city manager. Endorsing a candidate or a city attorney endorsing candidate, but also um, employees. Uh, employee groups endorsing candidates and even donating candidates. I think, you know, at times it can be a, for at least. A conflict of interest, if not a perceived conflict of interest, if uh, you have um, groups of employees getting together and. And supporting and donating and giving money to candidates that will in turn have to impact their salaries or. Or how money is allocated to their department. And so um, um. You know, I, 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 you know, I can't name all the other cities that have done this, but I've come to find out that it's, it's a little bit more common than I realize that. Um, city employees are kind of um, restricted from getting involved in local elections. And, and, and I wouldn't want that to cover, let's say, like, measure HH, like those type of things, but specifically the council, mayor. Treasurer and clerk.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I agree, um, Councilmember Patterson, I actually think it's a good idea. I think for far too long, um, Hawthorne politics has been one that has um, ultimately, you know. Especially this year, taken on a whole new level. I think it's important that employees and. And uh, department heads and um, leadership within city hall stays out of uh. Elected official running for office, whether it's the city clerk's seat or the city treasurer, I think it's important that everyone stays impartial. And um, it just, you know, allows for that election to occur. Um, I know there's some people that live in the city of Hawthorne that also work for the city of Hawthorne. And you know, that's, I would say, their personal business when it comes to, say, for instance, um. Putting a yard sign on their yard, that, I mean, because we start going into all of this other stuff, right? It's just not, so how do you do that? Are you now infringing on their, you know, what would you consider? City attorney First Amendment rights when it comes to, you know, posting their favorite candidate, you know? Um, how, how would we address that? I understand that one concern, but if. You're then gonna have, like, say, employees that work for the city of Hawthorne, vote in the city of Hawthorne. Uh, and then want a yard sign in their yard, how do you address that?
Yeah, um, you really can't address a number of the issues that you raised. Uh, it's their First Amendment right.
Yeah.
Um, um, I'm not aware of any city manager or city attorney endorsing a candidate. Um, it's been done without, you know, their permission to do so. Um, in terms of giving money for a candidate, can't stop that either. Um, but what I'll do is, it's easier for me to do a, a memo maybe with the, the published cases on what is permitted and what isn't permitted. But what is permitted is, nobody can do any campaigning on city time. And nobody can use city resources, you know, um, uh, for or against a candidate.
Yeah.
Electioneering, right? Is that termed, electioneering?
Yes.
And I think that's important, uh, that you're bringing that up, so let's bring that back for council.
Could you, could you do some research as to, I guess, what is possible, cause I, I am under the impression that in other cities. You know, they've precluded the, their employees from getting involved in elections, from everything from uh, endorsing to, to creating PACs and donating.
Yeah, I agree with the endorsement stuff, Councilmember Patterson. I agree, because we've got some union groups, right? That endorse, endorse the mayor and the city council, and that's not fair. Uh, I paid dues when I was former council member to the union. Uh, I never got any of their endorsements, let alone did I ask for their endorsements.
Yeah, I'll look into that. I, I, I've never heard about PAC being uh, prohibited from making an endorsement, but. You know, I'll look into that more and I'll, I'll prepare a memo for you.
Yeah, to, to the chair.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
It's very important, Russell, because this, this uh, the way you read, with splitting city employees. Uh, from getting involved in election, it doesn't say union groups. So that is what the Ms. uh, uh, Patterson and Ms. Ingles is bringing up. Is about those uh, uh, the unions, so because like as you said, they have their First Amendment right, and there is a. Supreme Court decision that these, these, they are free, uh, because then, you know, you would have. The same thing for the teachers' union, for example, so they should not be supporting candidates for school board. So, so it's almost, i- is, that's the kind of language that you need to look at it, because what David is trying to say. Is the union group not per se individual employees. Because individual employees after, after four o'clock, after five thirty, when they leave and go to their homes, they can do whatever they wanna do.
I mean, they end up going to vote.
Because they are, you know, like you said, First Amendment rights, so that is why we need to figure it out exactly. What are we trying to do here?
Right, that's a great point. I think it would be possible to restrict union.
Patterson, I like that you brought that.
Restrict individuals.
I'll, I'll get you.
Are you okay, uh, are you okay, Councilmember Patterson, with what's gonna, how it's gonna go through?
Yeah, yeah, so I understand that the city attorney is gonna just research and give us a, a memo as to uh, what is possible. And what, you know, yeah, what is legal in that respect.
Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you so much. Review of filming ordinances, uh, Ray English, please, Councilwoman?
Um, thank you, Mayor. So we all know, um, in the past, we had a, um. You know, our city known as a film destination where lots of films were made here in the city of Hawthorne and brought before. You know, major picture screens, including, you know, Fast and the Furious and some other uh, really great movies and whatnot, and. Um, I, 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 I kind of feel sad that uh, for the last few years or so, that we haven't had any. Uh, work uh, here in the city of Hawthorne that's, you know, uh, film related, and so I'm looking to bring back. Um, Film LA that could help us to streamline permitting, and I want to ultimately, um. You know, bring back revenue for the city. Uh, I know during, um, um. Campaign season, there was a lot of uh, individuals that I spoke to that live here in the city of Hawthorne. That are out of work and were, you know, part of this, the, the movie industry. And so everyone is hurting, and so there's just, you know, a way of uh, how can we bring revenue back to the city? And because of COVID going on and what have you, there are ha- there have been um, implementation safety practices included. Uh, in the industry, but I ultimately want um, to direct the city um, manager to. Uh, bring back Film LA through, um, you know, uh, an agreement and MOU with them, that they'll be. Um, streamlining permitting, and so that we could be able to bring filming back to LA and let businesses here. Um, you know, partner with Film LA to make movies and um. Let, you know, everybody across the board uh, make some revenues, so. Um, I know I had a brief discussion with um, the city manager, and I know that there was some concerns with some other things that are happening. That currently take precedent over um, this suggestion of mine. So I'm willing to wait until June, uh, July one, our fiscal July first, so that we can start having discussions and ultimately, um. Get this back.
It is a good idea.
It's a great idea, it is, it is a very great idea, but I'm, I mean, I don't mean that this is negligible, um, but. It almost does seem that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but the revenue that we get from these uh, permits and stuff. Permits on the filming, it's kind of negligible in small, small amounts, right? Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Well, so, so I think our, our revenue associated with filming has dwindled um, o- over the, the last few years. Um, I, I'm not exactly sure why that is. I, I do know that uh, the city used to have an agreement with Film LA, it does not anymore. Um, I've talked to representatives at Film LA, uh, when this issue first came up um, a few months ago. Uh, and there's uh, they, they strongly recommend us to, you really, I think, reevaluate our posture, posture towards the filming industry. Um, and um, potentially modify our ordinance related to filming. So, um, yeah, there's, I think there's the, a city municipal impact to filming as far as those permit fees, but then there's also. Economic vitality that potentially could bring into residents or businesses that um, get paid for the filming as well. Um, yeah, I, I think that we're, we're getting approached by the industry on a regular basis, and one of the. Uh, the work plan items that I'm looking for our finance department to tackle in the next fiscal year, as Councilmember Ray English mentioned, is. To, to evaluate um, our filming ordinance and see if it does make sense for us to revisit that. Uh, and potentially adopt the model ordinance that Film LA is recommending, uh, and certainly, I think we would. A- after that works done, we come back to the council with our findings and recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to the chair, yeah, I, I would like Eric, maybe you guys to go back. Uh, when we used to have that agreement, maybe go back to twenty twelve, until. Uh, for how long, you know, I don't know if we have that from twenty ten to twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen. So I wanna see those year, you know, how many permits that we granted, and what was the revenue? Uh, because the other thing to think about it that, you know, I agree on bring film to Hawthorne, but. They will, I would approve with the, with some exclusion of some nuisance. Properties that we want to be developed, so we don't want them to generate revenues and not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So that's the, that's the caviar over there, uh, that I, I do agree that we need to bring, because you know, film should be. Done in LA, in Hawthorne, in Hollywood, not in Canada, not in Louisiana, but right here. Uh, but at the same time also, cause I remember there was, before I get to this council, the reason you, they stopped. Uh, most of the film is because people did not want to see um. Film at the mall or at the Robert F. Kennedy, because that would make, generate income for the owner. And not to the city, and that they would not give incentive to develop those properties.
Yep, that sounds pretty accurate.
Okay.
To the chair, should I, um, city manager, um, I don't think we need a vote on this, I think you're just gonna bring it back, correct?
Yes, I think the direction is clear, um, and I, I, I think we're gonna, it's, it's not only just a, a policy decision whether we wanna. Um, enter an agreement with Film LA, but it's really, do we wanna reevaluate our, our, our ordinance as it relates to filming? Um, and, cause my understanding is, is that we've got, we had some com- uh, a- a lack of alignment between. Where Film LA wanted to be and where our ordinance allowed us to be, and we, we perhaps need to harmonize those, so that it works uh, as it's intended. And so we will definitely um, tackle this in the next fiscal year.
Yes, thank you, I agree. Um, I, I'd like to ultimately see a collaboration that works for both.
Yeah, or even if they're willing to give us a draft what they want, for us to consider with your recommendation from the city. You know, we can start looking, you know.
Uh, so it, it's available for download, I, I mean, it, 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 there, there's a standard process. Um, our, our partners at the LA Economic Development Corporation have recommended it. Um, a- as Councilmember Ray English mentioned, you know, I, I do have concerns about us tackling this right now, just because we have so many other. But it's, it's, it's on the list and, and we will get it when, um, when we can, but I, I do think that's gonna be in the next fiscal year.
Okay, yeah. Another stumbling block that uh, you may not know about is the fact that. Uh, the entities that apply for these film permits are oftentimes denied because they're not current on their business license. And also another, uh, our code often provi- provides that. Uh, you know, if you haven't, uh, if you're applying for a building permit or any other permit from the city. You've gotta be current on your business license fees, otherwise it's not gonna get processed.
Yeah, there's some other, I'm gonna be addressing some of those.
Okay, so uh, Councilwoman uh, English, um, are, is forty-four and forty-five related, or are they?
No. Yeah, let me take forty-four, um, and I think, um, earlier, Mrs. Mack uh, addressed, addressed that. I don't know, uh, if any of you on the council have received, you know, calls from businesses. Uh, that have been hurting due to COVID, that have been shut down for seven, eight months, unable to do business, etc. But still having to pay for their business license, right? And I thought if there was a way of giving or getting these applicants to apply for small business loans, that some of these monies could ultimately help. Pay for some of those um, tax um, license fees, right? But we heard tonight that that cannot happen, we can't allow that to happen.
Yeah.
I just want, I just want the business community to know that this council is working hard to address the COVID. You know, dilemma, but ultimately, the business, the small business impact that it's had due to COVID. And more importantly, trying to find um, resources to, to provide you, so. Um, that was one item that I did want to discuss and direct, but we obviously cannot. Due to, um, it's not, it's, it's, it's COVID care dollars, it's not funded for those purposes. But I do want the city to help in a way that can use discretion to assist those businesses that. Are really uh, in dire help, and so if there's some way we could help them, I don't care if it's, you know. Um, a business plan, I mean, a, 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 a payment plan of sorts, but um, I do know that there's some businesses that are hurting, so that could get some direction. Uh, to the city manager on those, and um, I'm sure city manager, you've heard from businesses as well.
Am I, am I interject for a minute, please? Thank you. Actually, maybe what we can do also is um. You know, try to forgive them the, the late fees, right? If they didn't apply by December thirty-first. Uh, maybe we could, you know, those who came late, maybe not to penalize them. Not, not to, not, not to put a late fee on them.
Yeah, no, I agree, that's a come, you know, when we bring discussion action items to the council is to get, you know, your guys' feedback too, because I know. I'm not the only one that receives call, you know, from, from individuals, but, you know, just finding some, you know. Resources, even if it's, you know, a, a rebate of sorts, or if it's a payment plan, or. If it's a fee waiver, I mean, there's discretion that our city could use, and I'm not trying to give away the farm, trust me, I'm not one to give away the farm. But, you know, we have some folks that are in need, it's just not those that are, say, for instance, rental assistance, right, with, you know, unable to pay rent. But we've got the business community too that is hurting, so just thinking out of the box and trying to bring, you know, those uh. Those concerns to the council, the city manager, city attorney, and council members, because this is what I'm here. Those concerns to the council, the city manager, city attorney and council members, because this is what I'm hearing from the community. Uh the business community, but I think there's instructions there on how we could be a little bit more uh, you know, helpful. To the business community in using discretion when these types of predicaments come before us.
Um I would agree and I, but I think also that the uh. We will have money from the CARES Act dollars, we're also going to have more money when the new bill is, when the new law is passed. Which is going to give us um additional monies and I think we should use some of that money to help businesses that are. Suffering, I think we'd have to figure out some way of taking applications and finding out to what extent covid has impacted those businesses. And and you know, get applications from them to to find out how much, how much they are in need, how much covid has impacted them. And um and and figure out what 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 we can do to help them, but I agree, I think we should assist them to some extent. Based on um, based on what they're, what they're uh, what they're suffering, because I I know when we had the business expo. We could tell the businesses were were twisting themselves in knots trying to. Trying to uh find a way to 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 survive this, so I would agree, we should find some ways to help them.
Yeah, and one, one thing you may not be aware of is that most, a lot of the businesses before covid nineteen, they. Had already prepaid their business license taxes uh for the fiscal year. And they, because uh their revenue went down so much, you know, they're gonna be able to get a credit, you know, for this upcoming year. So that's gonna give them a a huge uh benefit because um.
When you say a credit, a credit from what?
Because they overpaid for last year because their.
Oh, I see.
Their revenue went way, way down because of covid nineteen. I mean, there's others that their revenue went way, way up because of covid nineteen, like Target and Target and.
Right.
Costco, those kind of.
And that's good to know because, you know, like hair salons, beauty salons, nail salons. Uh restaurants, you know, have been closed. And so it's good to know that we could let those businesses know that are having concerns that to look for, you know, uh. A reimbursement, right?
Yes.
So thank you.
Whatever they.
Credit, whatever they prefer, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, I have one last, one last one.
You ready for the last one?
Yes.
Okay, please.
So um this is another um, you know, concern of mine. Um more recently because of the businesses that have, I've received calls and again, this is nothing new and it has to do with our municipal. Auditing services and I'm bringing it before the council because I know that there's been complaints from businesses regarding aggressive practices. Um from this agency, especially an agency that's requesting for ten years of taxes. Their customer service interaction has been lacking in my opinion from, you know, from what I've heard in my understanding. I also know that businesses that are one-time businesses that come to Hawthorne, that say, for instance, does a carpet cleaning. One time or does a plumbing are being, you know, audited and requested for ten years in the making. Of of their business and who's to say they don't have ten years worth, but this type of aggressive uh pursue of of monies. Um is a concern for me and I've also heard from businesses that have said that they've never had these types of practices done on them from previous. Say, other cities and so a lot of these businesses are leaving um out of Hawthorne because of these types of practices that are done in the city of Hawthorne. I understand there's a collective effort between city and a third-party agency to collect. Uh due monies to the city, I get that. But I also believe that there shouldn't be such a longstanding contract that ultimately. Um has to be, in my opinion, um you know. Looked at here and there, it's been what, eight years since this contract has been in the making? I've, in a sense, have lost con- confidence in their ability, I'm asking for the. City manager and to look to see what other um services there are out there to um ultimately um. Collect our tax dollars, look at another agency perhaps, um I just think sometimes it's important that we. Um rotate out some of these longstanding contracts that we've had and look for other R F Ps and see if we could get something. Um you know, that that we want to assure that uh we don't have, say, for instance. The harassment, the customer service, the, you know, in my opinion, bullying. And as you alluded to, city attorney, you referenced that, you know, if folks don't pay their taxes, you know, they can't get their. Licensing and if they don't get their licensing, they can't open because they're illegal and they're operating without a license. So it's kind of like uh, you know, a back and forth going on and. I really, you know, I think the city really cannot afford for businesses to continue to leave city. Whether it is because these types of municipal, uh this type of uh of collection services or because of, you know. Uh not assisting in in business endeavors and so. Uh I'm bringing it before the council, I'm not, I'm not the only one that heard of, you know, stories, but. I know council members have heard from uh, you know, with regards to this type of practice and this type of contract, so. I wanna hear and at the same time direct how we could maybe look for another entity for um collection of us taxes for our city.
Through the chair, I don't, I don't have a problem looking, looking at other um entities to to collect taxes, but. I think that um some of the businesses, I know I've I've interacted with some businesses who. Um complain about the practices of the the auditing services. But they just don't wanna pay their taxes and I've had that experience, no, some businesses. Just don't wanna pay and resist paying and so. They don't want to be audited because they don't want to pay, so I mean, I don't think we can afford to. Allow businesses not to pay their taxes, I I I I agree that we sh- that that. There shouldn't be bullying tactics, I don't wanna see bullying done. But the businesses have to pay their taxes, that they they're, they're given the privilege of doing business in the city of Hawthorne. And um I don't think our taxes are that uh that unreasonable, that they shouldn't have to pay their taxes.
I I agree.
Twenty 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 was a different year. Twenty 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 was a different year and there might be some leeway given because. Perhaps people weren't a, businesses were not able to meet their obligations on time in twenty twenty, all of that can be looked at. But the bottom line is for me that businesses have to pay their taxes, I don't, you know, I'm not in favor of. Um us letting them not pay their taxes.
Yeah, yeah, uh I think it's worth seeing, you know, if there's any other game, uh any better game out there, there's any alternatives. I I I, there are some practices by M A S that I I'm not a fan of, you know, they'll find. People who decided they wanna start a business, like home-based business and who have not had one cent of revenue. Not operating a any sort and not have to pay three years of back taxes, um. And and their their collection, even though they, all they do is send letters, it's quite threatening. Uh and I've had a number of people call me very afraid based on these letters that they've sent. Uh for businesses, they never really operated, so um I definitely think it's worth seeing who else is out there.
Yeah, I I I can speak to this because um um I I get those complaints and then I'm the ones. I'm the one that meets with these uh, these taxpayers and they don't like talking to me either because. All I do is I go over their uh, you know, the fact that they're doing business in the city. You know, I go over their their tax return and I say, yeah, you owe, you owe the city your taxes. I mean, I don't know how else to tell you and you've been getting letters from the city or from M A S for ten years. You've ignored it for ten years and you just don't wanna pay it, how come you just don't contact M A S? And M A S puts on the letter, if you don't wanna deal with us, talk directly to the city, that's the default. So they don't have to talk to M A S, they can talk directly to the city. The city, you know, myself and Shannon and the finance department, you know, we have regular meetings uh with the taxpayers and. We do discuss this, they're no happier with us than they are with M A S, but you know. They have to deal with us because we tell them, this is what you showed us, this is your gross receipts. Our tax system is based upon your gross receipts and this is how much you owe us and. I don't know what else to tell these people.
You know, we're not talking about those, those sits near, we're talking about people who. Uh came up with a business name and never operated a business.
Yes, and and we actually resolve all of those.
Yeah, yeah, but they 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 approach those people pretty aggressively.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the letters and I've I've been told those letters are aggressive and they seem more factual. You know, we detected that you're doing business in the city, you don't have a business license, uh can you please contact us? I mean, they use the word audit, we need to audit and all that basically means is we need to see uh documentation. As to your gross receipts and all of that is evidenced in their tax returns, um and. That's all the city does and M A S is uh is a good partner for the city in that. M A S is the one that actually taught other firms that are doing the same thing and um. You know, they've been, they've been good to the city, I think they brought the city seven or eight million dollars since they've been working for the city.
They collect about, they keep about fifty percent of what they collect, isn't that correct?
Uh forty percent.
Yeah, yeah, I I.
And um right now, um. I believe the city did use a different firm for like two years and I think it'll be easier for finance to. To basically demonstrate that the revenue from business license probably went down seventy, eighty percent. During the time that we used that different vendor, so but that's, that's gonna be.
We need to now go back to that vendor view.
Yeah, but that that's something that Eric and the finance department has to determine because it it takes like a, a specialty. To be able to track down people that are doing business in your city because nobody uh comes to your city, raises their hand and says. I'm doing business, I wanna pay my taxes, there are some people that do that and there's a lot more people that don't. And the the reason why M A S is successful is because they go through all of the state license boards. And they go through the secretary of state and the the federal databases and they can tell who is actually doing business in your city. And that's something that we just don't have the manpower to do ourselves.
So having said that, Russ, what, what? How is the city helping to address those entities that are having problems uh, you know, paying their back taxes? Moreover. Why does it have to be, you know, ten years, why can't we?
Uh you know, we uh, we haven't gone back uh ten years, we resolved it, so it's, you know, we had, we've had taxpayers that. I mean, I know one that Olivia got involved with, who just has been told for seven years straight. You haven't paid us a dime, you know, and you owe us these taxes, but you won't even tell us how much you make. And they, I think they've gone around talking to each of the council members or at least three of you. You know, to say that they don't wanna pay their business license taxes because, you know, they're exempt when there is no such exemption. And these are the, the typical cases that we deal with on a regular basis, I think the business license department said that their own. Uh stack of unpaid taxes, you know, it's like they've got probably five hundred or a thousand cases. Uh of people that just ignore the letters about you owe us taxes.
So what is our city, what is our city doing to help these businesses? Are there, is there discretion that could be used? Is there a payment plan that could be used?
They, they always accept a payment plan.
Okay, so.
I mean, and we're talking about, sometimes uh we're talking about a business license, uh like uh Mr. Patterson said. You know, they, they may owe seventy-five dollars for the year.
And they're asking for ten years.
Uh well, that's uh.
Yeah, it's usually multiple years that.
They, they may have been ignoring letters for ten years. Yeah.
Yeah, but but if somebody, if somebody came up with a business name five years ago and never really operated that business, um.
And we resolve those.
Those that were the people that come in to you to to resolve them, uh those are the ones that get resolved. But I don't know why.
And we have people that actually say, I'm moving out of the city and we tell them, well, you did sit, you you made, you. You earned revenue in our city for two years, uh so you have to pay for those past two years, even though you are no longer located in the city.
So, so. You know, when you're talking about cases of people where where they're upset and they came and addressed it with you.
Yes.
And and they're resolved, there's still a lot of people who uh don't, 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 they don't fight it.
Yeah, and everybody, everybody is welcome to call us and make an appointment with us and we talk to them.
You understand, though, right, but it should, we shouldn't beat them on the head and then, and then um fix it after they've spoken up. Yeah, it's the approach should be different from beginning.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to add too is that I get those calls, I've been getting those calls since uh. Since I've been aware of like, like the whole uh business license tax, uh you know, companies that's been used. And sometimes they look for us, but they don't give us the complete story at the end. And so we do refer them, okay, no, not a problem, talk to our city attorney, it's like, okay, forget about M A S, talk to our city attorney, here's the number. And then they don't end up, and I end up forwarding the messages to our city attorney. And they don't get a call from them, they end up paying the taxes because they probably know that they owe it. Or so they're not giving us the complete story, so they're telling us something and giving us. Uh like their version of something, but it's not complete, it's like there's always something that might be missing. But you're right, I mean, I I am concerned about the times where. Maybe M A S might not get it, right, and then they do send something out, but then that's why, that's when they call us. And then that's when we send them to the city attorney, they follow up. And these things have been resolved where, hey, you know what, they really didn't operate, they really just didn't operate. And so everything's cool, everything gets canceled out, so it's a mixture of things, though, I think. Sometimes, like I said, it's a legitimate concerns, but for the most part, it's people that actually do owe money. They they somehow, like, they might have ignored it, I don't know what it is, but I hear this is a contract that we can't.
Oh, yeah, and and I think the directive is to have the city manager and the finance director. Look if there's anybody else that performs the same service.
Yeah, and then moving forward and I thank you for that information, Russ, and I thank you for Mayor's information and you're absolutely right, there's always. There's always two sides to a story, absolutely, absolutely. But when we use discretion and then, you know, they're contacting the city and not M and M and M and S, that's fine. I just wanna be able for the city and I don't know if you do this, you probably do, Russ. You sent a letter to that business saying that, you know, we spoke today with regards to your concerns and this is the result that we, you know. There's gonna be a payment plan arrangement made or there's gonna be this or that, so that they could at least know. It's not, you know, letters from your due, your due, your due, your due, but you went through the city. To ask for help, now the city has forwarded you a letter saying, this is the discussion we had and this is the resolve we want to ultimately make, right? And have that be like done.
I send out uh a lot of letters myself, you know, to these delinquent taxpayers and I'd say ninety percent aren't even responded to. Uh, nothing.
Well, I I I appreciate that and uh I I I think we gave the directive and and I think for the most part, you you addressed it just recently.
Are we good to move on?
Because I have to tell you that I went to the same experience with this agency. But I I did resolve the issue because they are very aggressive in some point uh that. They tried to, like uh Ms. English and David mentioned, that those, some of the business, for example, I can give you that in two thousand one. Monita Gardens, uh you know, create this entity called uh Community Advoc- Advocate, right? It was just to bring interns from La- La- Loyola Matamoun, from USC, legal department to to help us out. But it was Monita Garden, it was not, we, it was not Community Advocate, but but they find out that that name existed. So they would determine that we owe city tax for fifteen years, so I have to clean it up, the whole mess. That it was uh, it was under the umbrella of Monita Gardens licensing, right? Uh but there is some people, there is some people don't go to that, to that experience, but I do understand that they do have aggressive methods. But I would say before we dismiss them, maybe to give them a performer evaluation, right? To see how 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 they've been doing and one thing that probably that it's missing, for example, when Russell. Talks to some of the business, uh but then uh the. Audit company continued to send letters, so I don't know if there i- if there is like a, a lack of. Understanding between all the three parties, like with Ross's is talking to these people, so so the audit company should stop sending letters. Right, uh but they continue to send letters, even when they have reached out to the, to the city manager or 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 to Ross. Because I I I went to that experience with with myself, with my company and also with some other business, tried to help them up, solve the problem because. I find out how to solve it, but that is the communication that we need to figure it out. If if it's been lacking, how can we improve it? If these audit companies making us money, not to dismiss them, but how them, they could uh. Reinvent themselves and become a much more customer-friendly, uh because they're a good partner like Ross has said for the city.
Yeah, we we've actually worked with them to rewrite their letters, uh to make them nicer in tone. And once the city uh is involved in. And once the city, uh, is involved in any of these, uh, these cases, uh, M A S is told to stop all letters and stop all communications to the, to the taxpayer.
Right. And, 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 and just on a, uh, you know, I'm looking at the contract. And, um, page two, item two talks to personnel. And it's written there and it says neither city nor elected or appointed board, officers, officials, employees or agents of the city shall have control over the conduct of consultant or any of its consultants, officers, employees or agents. He's not forth in this agreement, and I think that's ridiculous.
Maybe that's needs to be.
This, this is, this is, this is the point that I, you know, um, and again, there's, there's two sides to every story. But you know, the, the bullying tactics, the aggressiveness, you know, the customer service, lack of, you know, these types of things and we, and it's written in this contract that we can't address that? They've been, they've been part, it's been part of this city for eight years. We should at any time bring this forth and have concerns because this is not the first time in my years of, 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 you know, governing, that I've heard from businesses. And they've had to pay out a lot. Some businesses have had to pay out ten thousand, fifteen thousand. Some are, you know, using some of their savings because they, 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 they want to continue to operate, they can, continue wanted to be here in Hawthorne. But for others are like, you know, forget this, I'm going to somewhere else to do my business and they'll leave.
Yeah, we haven't really run across anybody that's left, left the city because of that. Our business license taxes are pretty low compared to surrounding cities. Um, but in terms of, of elected officials contacting M A S, well, that basically is just our form of government here. It's a city manager form of government. You know, if ever you have an issue, um, most of the council members just refer it to, uh, Eric. Uh, to contact, uh, M A S. But normally, like for anything, uh, that comes up within that, this city business, I think almost all elected officials go through the city manager anyway.
We have. All right, well, I, I thank you for that.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the closed session?
We didn't receive any comments.
No, if not, all the clear oral communications close ordered. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess.
Thank you. You guys ate it.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts. Intense fire seasons. And pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's forty million residents, its businesses, and every level of government. To combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills. And get more good food to the one in eight Californians, including the one in five children who are food insecure. At twenty-three million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. Thirteen eighty-three requires new rules and regulations to achieve a fifty percent reduction in organic waste disposal by twenty twenty. A seventy-five percent reduction by twenty twenty-five, and actions to make sure twenty percent of currently disposed edible food is redirected. To Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in twenty sixteen. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
Thirteen eighty-three will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement. And changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place. By January one, twenty twenty-two.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways. Every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change. Feed more Californians and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for thirteen eighty-three implementation.